Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm just going to call to order this special meeting of council for Monday, December 16th. And I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish people, which include the Songhees, the Squamalts, and Shenoo. Shenoo? Did I say it right? Thank you. Shenoo. I keep practicing that. I'm gonna eventually get it. So if the more I say it, the more I'll get it. Looking for approval of the agenda, please. Thank you, moved by councillor Logan, seconded by councillor Jensen. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Mayor's message. First of all, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, whatever holiday you celebrate in this holiday season, welcome this evening. And we are here tonight so that we can give the developers of Royal Bay and Royal Beach an opportunity to present their development proposals to council. This is a special meeting of council, and we have included an opportunity to hear from you as well, the public. Here is how this meeting will proceed this evening. First, we will hear from Gablecraft. This will be followed by a question and answer session between council and the developer. Next, we will hear from Seacliff Properties and Keycorp. This too will be followed by a question and answer session between council and the developer. After both presentations have concluded, we will provide an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions or to make comments regarding the proposed development. Please remember to direct your questions through me. So if you are asking questions of the developer, this is a council meeting, so that we're asking that everyone can come through the chair. I also cannot promise that answers will be readily available. So staff will be recording any questions that anyone has, and will either be followed up through staff, through developers, or at a future committee of the whole meeting. So if it's a simple answer, we'll try and get that tonight. Otherwise, we'll just be recording the questions if there's questions that are presented this evening. Saying that, we are now on to 4.1, which is the presentations. The first will be Gablecraft Homes regarding an update on the Royal Bay development. You just gotta turn it on. If you just click it. Did it click on for you? There you go.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you our plans for La Torre a South. My name is Lance Flohr. I'm the president of Gablecraft Homes. Presenting with me tonight is Dan Wong, Principal of Urban Systems. We'll be addressing the planning considerations within our presentation to you. Also with me is Ben Mycroft, our Senior Development Manager at Royal Bay. The technical team on our submission includes the following consultants, Bund Transportation Engineers, Onpoint Engineers, Ladder Landscaped Architects, Talbot Arborists, PGL Biologists, Keystone Environmental, and Colliers Commercial. Our objective for this evening, as Mayor Martin mentioned, is to provide an information presentation to council. This presentation will be about our broad plans for La Torre a South. And the focus of our application is an amendment to the current official community plan. The focus of our application is on zoning and to ensure alignment with that OCP. How do we advance to the next slide here? I'm glad it wasn't just me. Maybe while we're doing that, some of the content for the next slide I can talk about while we're trying to bring that slide up. And it provides you, and many of the people in the room would be aware of kind of the overall history of the land, but I'll provide sort of some high points on that. Gravel extraction began in Royal Bay in the late 1800s. Producers Pit began operations around 1919, and the site was an active mine for over a At its peak, the mine produced over 20,000 metric tonnes of gravel per day. The mine site was decommissioned in 2007 and has been undergoing repair and restoration since then, guided by the city's official community plan and the mine reclamation plan filed with the province. As a result of this mining activity, the South Pit will be challenging to develop. And to provide you with a sense of scope, somewhere between 1.2 and 1.4 million cubic metres of material will need to be moved and placed to create a site geotechnically suitable for development. The outcome will be a fully reclaimed mine site for the benefit of the City of Calgary or City of Callwood. Little Freudian slip there. Longtime Calgary resident, just for the record, and its residents. By the end of the development, there will be literally thousands of new trees where there hasn't been a tree in some cases for over a century. And that'll be achieved through our reforestation programme, through our lot planning programme, and the park construction that we're doing. More recently, the history of the site continues. Gablecraft Homes purchased the land west of Machosen Road at the end of 2017. At the same time, Seacliff Properties purchased the lands between Machosen Road and the water. Prior to that, all of the lands were owned by BCIMC. BCIMC purchased from Lehigh, then the mine operator, in 2013 and commenced development in 2016. By the end of this year, there will be over 240 occupied dwelling units in the Meadows, also known as La Torre a North. So that represents well over 500 residents now who call the new portion of Royal Bay home in addition to all of the neighbours surrounding the community. On this slide, everything you see is current. These are all things that exist today at Royal Bay. The development of La Torre a North has been a collaborative process with city staff. We've continued to develop a deeper understanding of the needs of the local marketplace. What we've learned is affordability remains a challenge, particularly with respect to the ability of buyers to qualify for a mortgage. And with that comes the need for even broader diversity of available housing types. The development of La Torre a South really begins to unlock the promise of Royal Bay for the community of Callwood. It will offer an even broader range of housing options. Through the extensive public engagement process we've already engaged in through 2019, we've consistently heard from existing residents about their desire for retail services and amenities, particularly a grocery store, a place to buy coffee, a pharmacy, places to meet their daily needs in the community. And recently, the school district has clearly indicated their desire for a 500-student elementary school. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Dan, who will walk us through the planning considerations for the project.
Thank you, Lance. Good evening, your worship, members of council. So as Lance mentioned, the site has been an active mine site for over 100 years. And in over the last 21 years, the vision for Royal Bay has been reflected in Callwood's OCP and supported in its planning framework. In 1998, the OCP established Royal Bay, including La Torre a South, as lands for development. Those lands started developing in the 2000s, with housing developed in the Hatley, Delora, and Pelican neighbourhoods. In 2014, a significant area plan was created for the remainder of the Royal Bay site called the Royal Bay Area Plan. And then from that, La Torre a North rezoning and OCP amendments were created for the 240 homes that Lance had discussed in the Meadows. In 2018, as you know, the City of Callwood underwent extensive consultation with the community. Through that consultation, it reconfirmed Royal Bay as the heart of the community and provided an opportunity to look at increased density to support this mixed-use village centre. So we're here to start this process this evening to discuss the 2019 update for La Torre a South and to provide some more details about the land use concept and the zoning, which is to align with the city's new OCP land use objectives. As Lance mentioned, Gablecraft Homes is committed to building upon its success in La Torre a North. We acknowledge the bold vision and goals outlined in the city's new OCP, which again reaffirmed the city's desire for a spectacular seaside community with vibrant public spaces, family-friendly neighbourhoods, and realistic transportation choices. More specifically, the Royal Bay neighbourhood reflects the following principles which are echoed in the OCP, including enhanced connectivity, improved transportation linkages, providing a diverse range of housing options, identifying space for civic institutions, providing commercial employment opportunities, enhancing the existing park space and growing parks and trails within the City of Callwood, and finally, protecting environmental and natural features. The land use concept identified for La Torre a South continues forward with the overall vision from the Royal Bay Area Plan, and as mentioned, has been enhanced and emphasised through the work the city undertook in 2018 through its OCP. Specifically, La Torre a South provides a number of really exciting opportunities for the community and the neighbourhood, including a vibrant urban village, numerous commercial amenities, including a grocery store, restaurants, shops, open spaces, office spaces, or in a daycare, the important mixture of housing types to meet the many needs of a growing community, including detached, semi-detached, row housing, townhouses, and apartments. We'll continue to build upon the trail system and the park system with new parks and trails facilities, including new neighbourhood parks, playfields, urban parks, and plazas. We're looking for, we're offering space for potential institutional uses, including an elementary school, a fire hall, and a potential civic precinct. We will continue to support strong pedestrian and cycling connections, and we've been working closely with BC Transit to provide a new transit exchange to support BC Transit's frequent transit network. As shown on the map, there's two distinct but interrelated neighbourhoods in La Torre a South, the Quarry and the Commons. The Quarry is just over 130 acres, and the Commons is just under 30 acres. Total potential residential units identified in La Torre a South is about 2,000 units. This may seem like a lot, but it is spread out over 64 hectares, or 160 acres of land. Total potential non-residential square footage is estimated at approximately 190,000 square feet, with the first phase aligned with the current market demand of about 75,000 square The Quarry neighbourhood will feel similar to the current La Torre a North neighbourhood, featuring a variety of ground-oriented residential units. Additional key considerations: ensuring that that housing is in close proximity to schools, shopping, and open spaces. The housing will meet or exceed Building Code standards for energy efficiency and sustainable design, which Lance will speak upon later in the presentation. That close proximity to frequent transit service routes will allow for the ability to downsize your vehicle, so hopefully we can have one-car families in the future. Because you can combine that with the ability to work, live, and play in your community. We're working with the school district to site a new elementary school, and we're identifying new spaces to protect La Torre a Creek and surrounding parklands. So again, these are just some of the images of a couple of the playfields and some of the housing that's in existence. So as mentioned, there'll be a mixture of ground-oriented residential units between single-family to townhouse. We're taking steps to ensure that townhousing is provided along the major corridors. We've identified a site, it's about a seven-acre site for an elementary school to house approximately 500 students. And we're protecting, again, those parks and open spaces, including adding additional lands to the La Torre a Creek Park, providing land for a new playfield park next to the elementary school. So between the seven-acre elementary school and the three-acre playfield park, there's 10 acres of community space available, as well as providing new spaces, for example, Quarry Park. In addition, we've identified, in consultation with the city, areas for a potential future fire hall, as well as opportunities to site a potential civic precinct, which could include a library or maybe a new location for City Hall. We're really excited about the Commons, which will provide a vibrant village core to really realise the village, the vision that's been identified in the OCP. It will provide the everyday needs of residents within the Royal Bay neighbourhood, as well as the surrounding neighbourhoods for their shopping, retail, and other needs. It will include a walkable pedestrian-oriented space with urban plazas and opportunities to provide pedestrian market spaces as well, too. Representative images show kind of the scale and scope of the features potentially identified within the Commons. Specifically, we've identified an area, what we're kind of calling the Commons Village Core. This balances the needs of community and residents. It looks to provide success for the retail tenants, and it aligns with the vision of the OCP. The Village Core will provide space for those everyday needs, as mentioned, a grocery store, restaurant, coffee shops, office, and daycare, as well as providing associated residential needs with townhouse and apartment adjacent to the Village Core. We're looking at predominantly kind of four- to five-story wood frame within the Village Core area. Thank you. To the south, still within the Commons, is still a large area. It's about 20 acres in sight. This is the South Commons mixed-use area. It will again include opportunities for townhouse and apartment residential, four-to-five-story wood frame, but we also wanted to provide some flexible space for non-residential uses. We've been in conversation with other organisations, potentially in the university space, the health space, the technology space. So we wanted to provide that flexible space as we move forward in our planning in the future. And then finally, your worship, within the Commons, we've identified a space that we're calling the La Torre a Machosen Gateway. In appropriate locations, this could provide opportunities for higher density, should the market allow for it, in accordance with the OCP. This corner also provides a gateway to provide that pedestrian connection to Royal Beach across Machosen and to the waterfront. This village space will be a much more urbanised space than traditional suburban areas, so the gathering spaces are going to be really important. Those gathering spaces could include some hard surfacing, some water features, but we'll also try and provide as much green space as we can within the Commons to support public gathering and community gathering spaces. The rest of La Torre a South will include, again, significant parks, trails, and open spaces. This will provide community benefit by restoring and renewing all of the former industrial mine site and providing both opportunities to live, work, play, and recreate. We'll protect additional riparian areas along La Torre a Creek, improve stream protection through integrated stormwater management, provide for parks and open spaces within a five-minute walk of where you live, and a full range of trail and network connections. Connectivity is going to be a very vital part of getting around and through Royal Bay, both La Torre a South, La Torre a North, and across the way, that's Royal Beach. We will be re-establishing the perimeter pathway concept, which was identified a few years ago. This will link a series of parks and trails through South La Torre a, through North La Torre a, and provide wayfinding to establish potential walking loops. Gablecraft has established the first two-kilometre walking loop already in La Torre a North, and we hope to replicate that within La Torre a South. As mentioned, there'll be a future transit exchange along La Torre Boulevard. This will allow linking all destinations by vehicle, by bicycle, and by foot. And a number of local roadways through and around the site will be reviewed and improved, including the Ryder-Heddel Way extension. Specifically, we look to try and direct traffic from Machosen up to La Torre Boulevard and Veterans Memorial Parkway. Gablecraft has already undertaken a number of intersection improvements at Ryder-Heddel, and there'll be future intersection improvements, including signalisation at La Torre a and Machosen, which will be designed to coincide with the opening of the Commons. As noted, we've been in discussions with BC Transit to make sure that our transit system aligns with their future transit network. A future on-road bus exchange has been identified along La Torre a Road on both sides. This will live up to the original intent of the plan, and we're working through an agreement with BC Transit. The bus exchange will be adjacent to the Commons, where the proposed density and commercial activities lie, and also will allow for a potential looped system between La Torre a Machosen and Ryder-Heddel Way. We believe this transit hub will be designed for the Royal Bay community to promote transit connectivity to the greater regional network. In addition, we're working closely with staff and our neighbours and other developers in the neighbourhood to ensure future proofing for the City of Callwood. This ensures protecting additional right-of-way for La Torre a Road for future widening. As well, we've been coordinating with our neighbours at Royal Beach on a number of initiatives, including transportation, with a joint transportation analysis between Bundt and Watt Engineering Associates. We've been coordinating our park systems and trail systems between the two landscape architects, Ladder and PGL, to ensure that there's overall park and connectivity between and through both sites. And finally, we've been working with the City of Callwood staff to incorporate all other future capital items, including roads, water, and sewer, into the city's long-term capital plan, to be funded ideally through citywide development cost charges. Gablecraft has indicated and is committed to paying its fair share of DCCs, along with other developers who share in the future capital benefits. I'm just gonna turn it over to Lance to talk about a couple more slides.
Thank you, Dan. Excel Homes is, Excel Homes, Gablecraft Homes, yeah, just can't get it out of there, is committed to sustainability. I guess the mention of Excel is appropriate because our larger corporate group, under the banner of Excel Homes, has been a member of Bill Green Canada since 2007. And since that time, we've registered over 4,000 single-family Bill Green homes. We've consistently been one of the largest registrants of Bill Green homes in Canada. I've personally been on the board of Bill Green Canada for the past 10 years, and I'm just completing my second term at the end of this year as the chairman of Bill Green Canada. So we're heavily committed to sustainability as a company. We've been working together with the City of Callwood to evaluate the step code as it relates to single-family homes. We started registering and testing homes in Royal Bay at the beginning of Sector 2. That means that each home is enrolled with Bill Green, built to a predefined checklist, modelled by a certified energy advisor, and then at the completion of construction is also tested using a blower door test or a fan door test to ensure that it meets certain criteria. And in the screen, you can see an example of an actual fan door test being completed. We've been consistently achieving step code 3 on the majority of our single-family homes produced in Sector 2. We're also providing a rough-in for future solar, and that rough-in's called a solar-ready rough-in. Going forward, all of our multi-family units will be roughed in for EV chargers. We're also offering a higher level of sustainability options available to consumers so that they can take it beyond what's currently being offered as a Bill Green home. And then the commercial and mixed-use developments will include the installation of EV chargers A little bit about Gablecraft Homes. As I've mentioned, we're part of a larger, integrated Western Canadian real estate group that includes Excel Homes and Apex Land. If you Google us, you can find out more about us. We've been in business for over 30 years, and over that time, we've constructed over 12,000 homes and developed over 30 communities in Western Canada. Specifically in British Columbia, Gablecraft has completed successful projects in Comox, Nanaimo, and Kelowna. And our majority ownership is based in Vancouver, BC. The group is stable and well-financed, and we have the financial strength to tackle the development of the South Pit. And you've seen earlier in the presentation that that's a significant undertaking to create a residential community in the South Pit, given the conditions that exist there today. We look forward to bringing the deep resources and experience of Gablecraft to the development of La Torre a South. As mentioned, we've done several voluntary public engagement activities throughout the year. We've done two full-blown open houses, one in March and one in May, and over 160 people attended each of those open houses. Plus, we ran a separate open house for our pop-up coffee, and again, there was over 160 people at that open house. And we've received overwhelmingly positive feedback from the people that attended those open houses, and we've shared the results of those open houses with city staff in the form of a what-we-heard report. And there, we've, in a fairly raw form, delivered the results of those open houses. But what we heard very clearly was a strong desire for amenities to be brought to the community soon, and particularly a grocery store, coffee, pharmacy, again, those daily needs that we talked about. And there will be additional opportunities for public engagement as we go through the process, both voluntary and statutory. So we've scheduled our next public open house for the end of January, I believe it's January 29th, and then there will be a public hearing, you know, as part of the actual rezon process. There's some critical, we've worked collaboratively with staff to set a timeline that could get us to bylaw adoption by the middle of the year. On December 20th, so this Friday, we'll be submitting our complete rezoning application package to the city. Submitting pieces in terms of the technical reports throughout the year to staff, but you'll have the full application submitted before the Christmas break. January 20th, there's scheduled a committee of the whole, where we resume the committee of the whole process for Royal Bay. January 29th is our voluntary public open house. February 10th, we're tracking ideally towards advancing the application to council for first and second reading. In early March, we would see the actual public hearing. And again, working with staff, our goal would be to finalise the development agreement and adopt the land use bylaw by the middle of the year. That date's important because if you work back from, you know, when an elementary school would be open or a grocery store would be open, we really need to achieve that land use adoption by the middle of the year. The balance of the year and into 2021 would see detailed design, site grading, and the preparation of Phase 1, both on the commercial side and the school site and the next residential phase. At the end of '21, we'd start Phase 1 infrastructure and road construction. End of '21 and early into '22, ideally, we'd see the opening of a bricks-and-mortar grocery store. And then '22, we would see the continue of Phase 1 development. So you can see the importance in terms of the ability to deliver what the community is looking for. There is some urgency around getting us to advance the land use application to first So thank you again for allowing us to present our high-level plan to you tonight. The application we desire to bring forward to council is a rezoning application. We believe our application is consistent with the city's official community plan and very much aligns with that official community plan. As I mentioned, we look forward to bringing that application before council early this year, ideally for first reading in February. So thank you again very much for your time this evening, and at this point, we would welcome your questions.
Thank you, Lance. I will look to council. Does council have any questions? Councillor Povey Ashen?
Through the chair. Lance, thank you very much for the presentation. Great presentation. Just a quick question. I know you're about to give us your rezoning application before Christmas. Could you save me some time? Is there any major deviations from the OCP in this application?
I don't believe there is. It may be appropriate to invite Dan to come up and jointly field some of these questions with me. There are some things, I think, in the OCP that are potentially at odds with just ground-oriented single-family development, and Dan, maybe you could address some of those.
Thank you. Through the chair to- Through the chair to Councilor Kobayashi. The 2018 O C P really looked at Royal Bay, Royal Beach as kind of, again, that heart of the community. And so some of the densities actually proposed in the O C P are quite significant and ambitious, and so we're actually trying to achieve that additional density as much as we can. We think we've kind of created that in the village core, but at the same time, provided that broader mix of housing from single detached all the way to townhouse. So as far as the densities are concerned, it's a little bit, the units are slightly higher than what we previously had in the Royal Bay, South La Torre, but they're actually tracking, you know, kind of at the lower end of the city's fairly ambitious targets for its density. The other major changes in the South La Torre section of Royal Bay, there were actually three neighborhoods. There was the Commons, the terraces, and the quarry. We've kind of combined the Commons and the terrace to make the Commons actually a little bit larger, and so we now have two neighborhoods, and so that's kind of the fundamental difference there. We've kind of enlarged the Commons, so that will require an O C P amendment to do that, and then the quarry abuts to that. But primarily, we're trying to be as consistent with the goals of the O C P.
Thank you. I'm curious. Of course, it's a bit of a teaser for us, who are fairly detail-oriented in that there's a lot of talk and not many details yet for us to look at, but I wanted to ask you about accessibility because that was like a major issue, especially for La Torre Creek Park as it was developed. It was just not possible, given that particular topography, to make that an accessible park. And along the back of the quarry next to La Torre Creek Park is probably the greatest opportunity to create more accessible pathways, and I'm just wondering what you have planned for access.
Thank you. Through the chair to Councilor Day. It is a challenging site. There are many great challenges, and as you mentioned, it's very difficult to create that full accessibility in La Torre Creek Park. The quarry itself kind of will sit on that next terrace, and so across Quarry Creek Park there will be accessibility, and potentially even an amphitheater, but then it then dives down as well, too. So next to the school, we've identified an area of three acres, which would be a playfield park in a pretty flat area. And then ideally, the road network and the trail network ideally will provide that accessibility and connectivity to those shops and services into the core, into the village area. So trying as best we can to kind of mold the site along a fairly challenging terrain.
Just a follow-up question about accessible housing. I noticed that a number of the homes in Royal Bay North have one or two steps leading into the home. I'm wondering what the opportunities might be to provide a percentage of your homes that have no-barrier access, which is basically looking at no steps to get in the front door and a door that's large enough for a wheelchair to get in so that it's at least visitable housing, that somebody with a disability could visit, have a cup of tea, use the washroom, and leave again.
We've got fairly deep experience within the group with accessible housing, and there's definitely a willingness on our part to provide those opportunities. As we move through the subdivision, we do run into sort of grade-specific situations that make that more challenging in certain parts of the community, but where the grades would allow us to do that, we could absolutely achieve that and have the capacity within the group to do that.
Thank you. I noticed in your presentation, you talked about the Fire Hall and Civic Precinct, but I didn't pick it up on the maps. Could you explain where that's proposed?
Sure. Would it be okay if we walked back on the map? I think to... This probably isn't... This is a pretty good map, maybe to talk about the potential civic precinct. And if you look at the word Commons, if you just scan to the right end of that blue dotted line, you'll see a gray leaf, and that's one area where we're contemplating, or sorry, left. That's one area where we're contemplating the availability of a site for a civic precinct. You know, through, over the last couple of years, we've had various conversations with staff and even previous C A Os about the desire for a civic precinct and kind of the rough parameters that the city would be looking for for that in terms of the size, and the city has also expressed an interest in a public assembly area. So we think it would be useful to have that in close proximity to the Commons. I'll back up a little further. Yeah, so that would be the civic precinct right there. There's also been talk about potentially even a library incorporated into that facility. Fire Hall, I think it's actually just penciled in very gently on this. If you look at the large blue circle again in the upper left-hand corner where kind of the major collector would meet La Torre, that seems to be a site that would potentially make sense for a fire hall, a satellite fire hall in terms of accessibility back out of the community and proximity within the community. So we've been working, we have a couple sites, but I think that would be our preferred site for a fire hall.
Anything else? Oh, I just, I gave it to you and then you took it away. Sorry. Hold on.
Oh, thanks. Just the other thing I picked up on, you talked about the Commons being about 190,000 square feet non-residential with a start on the 75,000 square foot range. What would you see as a timeline to expand that to full? Would that sort of be as La Torre South grew, that would grow at sort of commensurate speed, or would you need more than La Torre South to build out that much non-residential? Any thoughts?
Through the chair, I'd like to let Dan maybe start that, and then maybe I could add a little additional color to that as well.
Thank you. Yes, through the chair, it is, the current market studies say that the current residential demand plus some of the first phases of the Commons could support that 75,000 for those everyday needs, grocery store, restaurants. The rest are going to be market demand. As mentioned, as more people come, the more demand on services. We say non-residential. It may not be the remainder as commercial. It may be, again, those other non-residential. So again, partnering with an institution or other technology sector, that may or may not be strictly kind of that retail commercial that you're thinking. So we left it open for the space and for the retail and the market space for that.
What I would add to Dan's comments are that some of the non-residential institutional uses could look a lot more like office space, conventional, low-rise office space, even post-secondary. You know, they're challenged for capital to build buildings, but they're a willing tenant. And if you think about some of their downtown campus kinds of scenarios, they're a willing tenant for that sort of space, for seminar rooms, meeting rooms, and offices. So some of those non-residential uses would very much look like office space as well. And then, you know, we continue to get inquiries from other kinds of institutional uses, and I think Dan used the word "future-proofing." We're trying to make sure the zoning is as flexible as possible so that as those needs come up, and to the extent that they're consistent with the O C P, that we'd be able to accommodate them either in the Commons, or there's also a transition zone, kind of a long-rider hedge stall, that would be suitable for some of those uses as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few thoughts. Are we dealing with it process-wise? Are we dealing with this in one package, Lance, or is this the Commons and then the quarry and then everything else? Is it all coming to us at once?
Through the chair, our intention is to bring rezoning for the whole South La Torre site for both. It would be in two zones, one for the Commons proper and one for the quarry, but all together.
Okay, good. And then as far as the Commons goes, I mean, you alluded to the fact that you've heard from the residents that we're awaiting commercial development in that corridor. When we move across the street to the Commons, is it going to be one of these scenarios where you have to build out so many residential units before we can start on the commercial? Or is it all going to kick off at the same time? Or are we starting with the commercial first and then moving to some of the residential? What does that look like timing-wise?
Through the chair, we've been working within the group to come up with a kind of neighborhood retail village that could advance on its own, based on the residents that we currently have, based on the surrounding residents, based on the kind of the larger regional context. We've come up with a design that we think we could start on right away. As soon as we had zoning in place, we could begin all of the detailed engineering work and permitting work so that we could be, you know, literally under construction in There's some things that we can do as a developer that maybe if a third-party developer came in that they wouldn't want to do because it would push up the overall cost of the commercial build. We want to bring some rich amenities as part of that commercial site. So because of, you know, the context of all of La Torre South, we can, in effect, contribute through the rest of the community to ensure that we bring high-quality retail in that first instance. So I think that was the question being asked, that we can build a seven-acre commercial retail village without having, you know, we need the continued development in La Torre South, but it's not contingent on hitting a certain number of roofs. We've got developers and tenants in place today that we could proceed as soon as we have zoning.
Thank you, Lance. That's great. Have we established what the densities are going to be along there? My understanding is when we were, there were some discussions around densities along through that corridor that impacted the traffic plan. It's difficult for us to sign off on a traffic management plan when the, you know, it could be this, or it could be that, or it could be this many doors, it could be that many doors. I mean, it's tough for us to see forward into the future and establish what the criteria might be for traffic management in that area. Is that well-established and outlined for us to consider as this comes forward?
Thank you, through your worship. We started our process working with our traffic consultants, Bundt and Associates, based on our development criteria, and then working with city staff, acknowledging that there's a companion developer on the other side who have their own traffic consultant as well, too. We work with city staff to create a joint memo, and so that's been updated. That's the most latest and current that will go into our zoning package, and will go into Seacliff's zoning package as well, too. So it is a coordinated effort to ensure that we are providing the improvements that are required to, you know, to manage traffic flow, encourage alternate modes of transportation, including transit and other uses. But based on those assumptions, there's a series of improvements that are identified based on the joint impacts of both developments.
All right. Thank you so much. Thanks for the presentation. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair, we actually have some supplementary information to answer Councilor Day's question, so at this point, I'd like to invite Ben Micrafe-Craft up to provide that.
Through the chair, I just wanted to elaborate on our response earlier to the accessibility question, and I just wanted to speak to a little bit around the standards that we've implemented in La Torre North that we would expect to use in La Torre South as well. So we're committed to using the Wanda Fucca Parks and Recreations Accessible Trail Standard. So we're committed through, for example, the Meadow Park Network, we have the three-meter-wide multi-use trail that runs at accessible grades. There are trails that, in some areas, due to challenging topography, we are challenged to meet those grades. So for example, we've just completed a trail segment on the north side of Royal Bay. We're working with staff to, you know, as best as possible, meet the minimum eight percent or maximum eight percent grade to ensure accessible routes for folks, but there are some areas where we're challenged on that. So we do our best on some of those perimeter trails while ensuring that there always is an accessible route. Same thing would apply in La Torre South, and the same thing would apply along the La Torre Creek corridor. We're proposing to dedicate additional forested lands to expand on the park area, and we're also committed to creating what we call lookout park. So there's an established lookout location up on the ridge that people are already using trespassing, but it's been going on for a long time. They're walking with their dogs, popping out of the forest. They're coming up a steep grade to do so, and we're committed to keeping that particular lookout available as well as providing access routes to it. So they won't all be accessible. For example, we're planning to, proposing to reach back into the park in that area to create a staircase to reach back down to the existing trail, and it's quite steep, so that wouldn't be accessible. But we would always ensure that there is an accessible route to some of these key locations.
Thank you, Ben. Moving on then, we're going to go on to 4.2 now, so this will be Royal Bay Beach. So I will invite Seacliff Properties and Key Corp. And we can give you a minute while we change out PowerPoints and all that.
He's not with us.
We got excited when there's food suddenly that shows up. Please, go ahead.
Perfect. Well, good evening, your worship and members of council staff. My name is Georgia DeJardin, and I'm the asset manager at Seacliff Properties, the owner of Royal Beach. Also in attendance for our team this evening are Niall Palteel and Jim Hartshorn from Key Corp Planning, and of course, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have at the end of this. So I'm here to talk to you tonight about our O C P amendment and rezoning application that's been submitted for the property and have shaped tonight's presentation around some of the interesting numbers of Royal Beach. So let's start with an easy one. 134 is the size of the site in acres. I know many of you are familiar with the property, but just a quick reminder of where we're located, which is just off McChosen Road down to the water. Royal Beach is a spectacular seaside property totaling 134 acres in size with 1.4 kilometers of shoreline. Most of you are also likely well-aware of the unique history of the site, especially since you were just given a reminder by Gablecraft's presentation a short while ago, so I'll keep this brief. But 100 is the number of years that the site was used as an operating gravel pit. That history has obviously left a scar on the landscape, but today, we see this expansive property as an amazing opportunity to create something special for the future here in the city of Callwood. Here are just a few images of what the site looks like as of today, but it is that very opportunity which formed the basis for Seacliff's acquisition of the property back in late 2017. And just a bit about Seacliff, for those of you who may not be as familiar with us, we are a Vancouver-based privately-owned real estate development company with well-over-30 years' experience in the successful development and management of large-scale real estate projects throughout Western Canada. As you can see from the screen, we are also huge believers in the future of Vancouver Island, with five major projects currently underway at various stages of development across Vancouver Island, being Fairwind, Sandstone, Citygate, and Westview in the city of Langford, and Royal Beach here in the city of Callwood. And again, Royal Beach specifically, in our opinion, represents a once-in-a-generation opportunity to develop the last significant waterfront land in the city of Callwood, and is an opportunity that we at Seacliff feel very fortunate to undertake. So 27 is the number of years over which the public has worked with the city and the owner, the various owners of the property over that time, to give input on the future development plans for Royal Beach. While development for the property has been contemplated since the 1970s, more detailed plans for the development were then created in the mid-1990s. It's throughout these past 27 years or so that various iterations of plans for the property have been presented and adopted and updated over time as the financial, environmental, and development landscape changed. Of course, though, no development has actually yet commenced on the property to date. On the screen, you'll see the latest plans which currently relate to the property, being the O C P, the area plan, and the zoning, which I'll discuss in further detail momentarily. being the OCP, the area plan and the zoning, which I'll discuss in further detail momentarily. In addition to the years of public consultation done to date as those various iterations of the plans were created, Seacliff has also hosted three public information meetings this past year to both present and inform the community on the most current development plans for the property, and also to receive their input and feedback. We had a fantastic turnout at each event, and in total have engaged with roughly 600 people to date. Overall, attendees at each open house were quite excited and supportive of the vision presented, especially as it relates to the development of the mixed-use core, which we refer to as the landing. A consistent item also raised by members of the community was the desire to see and ensure that appropriate planning was being done as it relates to the traffic impact that the scale of development would bring to the neighborhood, an item that we have worked hard on with our traffic engineers and our neighboring developers to ensure is the case. Overwhelmingly, another message that we've received at each and every open house is certainly the strong desire of the community to finally see this project move forward, especially as it relates to getting a waterfront pub and restaurant open, it seems. But again, and that's what we're here to speak about tonight. So Colwood, the city of Colwood and the public want, and the site certainly warrants a world-class development on this site, and that's exactly what Seacliff intends to deliver here. Though again, a world-class development can't occur without cooperation between ourselves, yourselves, and the public. Our job throughout this planning process and over the next 20-plus years over which this project will be built out is to continue to follow the intent of the OCP and deliver a place that we can all be proud of. Now, I wanted to talk about the planning framework as it relates to the property, both current and what's been proposed within our application, which was submitted in May of this year. There's three different aspects to the planning framework, which I'll be going through in a little bit more detail tonight, and which, all of which our application relates. So let's start off here with the official community plan. 2018 was the year that the city's OCP was updated, following extensive public input and bringing together one and a half years of background research, analysis of existing conditions, planning and design, and broad community engagement, along with an iterative review of staff across all the departments. Now, just a quick reminder of the purpose of an OCP. These points ahead of you were drawn directly from the OCP itself. But again, I think it's important to remember that the OCP is a guiding framework, a document that helps manage growth and shape change that brings the community's vision and goals as outlined within the OCP document to life. OCPs have a long-range planning horizon, in this case being approximately 20 years, with the policies designed to shape growth accordingly. So the Royal Beach site is envisioned for development specifically within the OCP, with the applicable land uses to the property being Neighborhood on the northern and southern boundaries, and Seaside Village in the central core. Ahead of you are the goals and objectives for the property as outlined directly from the OCP for the Seaside Village, with the intent being that this becomes one of two primary centers within the city of Colwood for cultural, civic, economic, and public life, characterized by its seaside setting, which distinguishes the city of Colwood from other municipalities. The Seaside Village designation, land designation also provides guidance as it relates to uses and built form, which brings me to my next figure. 1.75 is the base permitted FAR for the Seaside Village area, which also permits an FAR of up to 3.5. For those of you not familiar with FAR, just a quick reminder, it is the ratio of a building's floor area, total floor area, to the size of the piece of land upon which it is built. The base permitted FAR of 1.75 on a site of this size already translates into a massive amount of density. On the approximately 60 acres of Seaside Village land, this would equate to just over 4.5 million square feet of density. For context, assuming an average apartment is 1,000 square feet, this would equate to roughly 4,500 doors. But rest sure, that's not actually what we've proposed here. That's well over what our proposal contemplates in that regard. Still on built form guidance coming from the OCP is this figure, 12, which is the maximum number of stories that buildings are contemplated up to within the Seaside Village area. It's this in other directions directly from the city's OCP, which have formed the basis of our vision and development plans for the property. As you can see here on the left is the land use designations directly pulled from the OCP versus the right being what we've proposed. And as you can see, our application is almost completely in keeping in line with the visions and public's desire for the land uses for the property. In our opinion, the land use question here has already been answered by the city's OCP. Now, moving on in the planning framework, I wanted to touch on the area plan. So while the core of the OCP was updated in 2018 to reflect the community and city's values, goals, and objectives, appended to it remains the Royal Bay Area Plan from 2014, which was not updated at the same time. This 2014 document requires amendments in order to update, modernize, and align the area plan with the visions as set out in the 2018 OCP, which our application submitted in May 2019 is intended to do. An item actually, this item was actually specifically outlined in the 2018 OCP as a task that should be undertaken in the immediate term, with general policy 7.2.1 being to work with property owners and developers to revisit existing area plans to ensure conformance with new objectives and goals outlined in the OCP. That's the focus of our application before the city today. Now, moving on to the site-specific zoning. These two numbers ahead of you, 926 is the number of residential units, and 868,368 is the amount of non-residential square footage that the site is already zoned for. It should be noted that actually, at the time the zoning was put in place, which is back in the 90s, that the Royal Beach property boundaries were different. So this zoning is actually roughly in place on approximately 70% of the land area that now makes up the Royal Beach property. So here's just a quick comparison, showing what areas are currently covered under the RBCD4 zoning, which applies to the property and the corresponding heights. As you can see, we've also added a column in here, adding some guidance from the OCP, which as mentioned previously, does contemplate buildings up to 12 stories in the Seaside Village core area. As you can see on the right, we're proposing one area to allow for buildings up to 12 stories tucked into the Machosen hillside in order to minimize impacts on surrounding views, with a maximum of six stories permitted in the remaining landing area, and generally, three stories in the northern and southern portions of the site, which will be predominantly residential, with the exception of a strip along Machosen Road in the Bluffs area, which would be higher density in order to create a better interface with the Commons area of our neighboring development. As far as density is concerned, as already mentioned, a base permitted FAR of 1.75 is considered for Seaside Village with, Seaside Village area within the OCP, and an FAR of up to 1.2 is contemplated for the neighborhood lands. Applied across the 134-acre site, again, these floor area ratios translate into a massive amount of density and square footage. Our application, however, is to retain the existing non-residential zoning allowance in place at 868,368, while increasing the allowance for residential development from 926 up to a maximum of 2,850 units across the entirety of the site, which is in accordance with the OCP's vision. And again, I just also wanted to note that also does cover the entirety of the Royal Beach site now, not the 70% that the current zoning covers. We do acknowledge that this is density, that this density is below the density envisioned for the site per the OCP, but at a level that we strongly believe will achieve a strong balance between the goals and objectives for the site, and also the other infrastructure-related improvements that would be required to go above that figure. Next, I just wanted to briefly touch on the existing versus proposed land uses. Again, not a lot of variations here between the existing zoning that's in place versus what we're proposing, and also strongly consistent with what's envisioned within the OCP, being a mixed-use core in the landing area, surrounded by predominantly residential uses to the northern and southern boundaries. So as you can see, adjustments to the zoning are proposed, proposed to predominantly align it with the OCP, allowing us to deliver on that vision that was set out by the community when crafting it. Another important aspect to talk about in regards to the zoning is the scale and timeline of the property for that, for which that zoning applies. So 20 is the estimated time horizon in years over which this project is going to be built out. The zoning proposed for the site must allow for flexibility. While highly-detailed prescriptive zoning may be okay for a small site, the zoning for a 134-acre master-planned project to be built out over decades must provide a high degree, high degree of flexibility in order to be able to respond, adapt, and evolve to rapidly-changing market conditions and technological and environmental innovations. Let's just think for a second how much has changed in the last 20 years. I hope, that's Elias Pedersen in the middle for anyone who doesn't watch the knacks. He was one-year-old at this time, 20 years ago. Another good example of the need for a partnership and flexibility within the zoning is the potential for a new B.C. ferries commuter terminal, which, if built, would connect the west shore from Royal Beach to downtown Victoria. Like Maria, like Maria, like Maria, like Maria. Here in council, we believe this could be a game-changer for the west shore and an opportunity that we are allowing for in our master plans, along with the necessary parking in the event it moves forward. Supporting public transit is key to creating a vibrant community, and we need the zoning to have the flexibility in place to be able to respond to such opportunities in an appropriate and timely manner. So our application to amend the zoning has been designed with this in mind. Collectively, the updated OCP and zoning will complement the planning framework that is established for the successful long-term community development of Royal Beach. These are the base documents upon which a world-class development will be delivered. However, again, this can only be achieved through cooperation and partnership. So I hope this has provided some useful context and a better understanding where things are at today and where we are trying to go from an OCP and zoning perspective. While from your perspective, you may see the completion of this rezoning process as the conclusion. For us, this entire process is really just getting us to the starting line. As far as real estate development goes, this is far from a sprint. This is more like a very long marathon, an ultra-marathon. This is really, really an exciting opportunity for us to work together in making the vision for this community a reality. So moving on from the discussion around the planning framework, I also just wanted to touch on the huge amount of work and thought that's also gone into our application to rezone the property that was submitted earlier this year. Not only did we need to review and understand the vision and goals set out for the property as contained within the OCP, but we also needed to understand and plan for the property-specific opportunities and constraints so that we could develop a feasible, resilient development plan for the future. So let me be clear, we've worked with these consultants and others. Yes, there's a variety of technical aspects to the property. And yes, we've worked with a variety of different professionals in order to understand and to plan accordingly for those various factors. It's also important to understand, however, that these aspects will all continue to influence the site-specific development proposals and ultimate buildings that are constructed here in the future. We understand the various factors at play and are planning for the future. However, detailed reviews and final decisions on some items can only be done when detailed plans are available at the time of development permit and building permit. Before the city today is an application as it relates to land use, not development or building permit, when some of these technical aspects can and will be determined in more detail. For example, let's just talk about the shoreline for a second. Firstly, it's always important to understand where our property lines truly fall. As you can see on the screen ahead of you, the decisions related to the interface of the property in the ocean are not ours to make. Our property line is just detailed by the pink line across the front of the site. So what does that mean? Well, first off, it's not up to us at the end of day what, if anything, is done to the shoreline now or into the future, including as it relates to decisions around whether or not to consider hardening the shoreline to minimize erosion impacts. Which takes me to my next point, 2,200, 181 years from now. That's how far into the future that we've planned our setbacks, assuming no mitigation measures are ever employed on the shoreline, and assuming a two-meter, two-meter sea-level rise increase during that period. That is double the provincial requirements, which states that shoreline developments should be planned for a one-meter of sea-level rise, which is anticipated to may occur between now and the year 2,100. So I just want to put that in context for a second. Canada, as in yes, the country Canada, was founded in 1867. That's 152 years ago, and here we are planning for 181 years into the future. In addition to the shoreline study and analysis, we've completed a number of other important reports and studies to shape our proposals, which staff can certainly confirm as they work through them, including geotechnical, traffic, parking, environmental, civil, and commercial absorption, to name just a few. I know of particular interest to the community is ensuring we have appropriate traffic solutions in place to accommodate the future growth, which we do. We've also worked closely with our neighboring developers to ensure that the traffic is looked at in a cohesive, consistent manner to find solutions that will work with the proposed developments within this corridor. We have proposed that a number of critical traffic improvements be included in the upcoming DCC bylaw update, and are also proposing immediate-term projects, such as the intersection improvements at La Torre and Machosen, which could commence immediately upon the completion of this and our neighboring developers' zonings. In regards to the parking, we've also had our engineers complete studies in order to determine the appropriate levels of parking for the property, and again, we'll be shaping our plans accordingly. These reports will also be updated over time as the community is built out to ensure they stay consistent, especially considering the long-term nature of the project. A number of assumptions have obviously had to be used to date in order to forecast out what may or may not occur over the next 20 years. So these assumptions will be monitored and reassessed over time to ensure that all reports are kept current. Again, though, Royal Beach is about so much more than the technical reporting. It goes without saying that the technical, technical aspects will be covered off and will continue to be reviewed and updated in the future as the city's development and permit, and building permit processes are designed to ensure. What I did want to be clear, though, is that we are and will continue to do the work on the technical aspects of the property. We understand the various factors at play, and we're planning accordingly for them. However, again, the application before you today is for land use, not development or building permit. I think it's important that this context be kept in mind, as otherwise, it can often be easy to want to slip into discussions on highly-detailed aspects of the property when in reality, more detail certainly will and can be looked at as we move towards the development permit application phase. So at this point, I'm just going to hand it over to Niall Palatil from Key Corp to talk to you in a little bit more detail about the OCP amendment and rezoning application itself that's before the city today.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, members of council. Before I begin, I just have a procedural question here. Do I direct my comments to Counselor Logan's necklace? Or is it to the chair still in this meeting? Because it's, it's very loud, but I'll do my best to, to keep focused. Thank you very much, and what I'm here to cover off today is, what I think is an exciting part of the application, which is, is the, the OCP, our sub-area plan, and the zoning of the application, and how that aligns with the city, and how the future build-out of Royal Beach will, will, will affect residents today, tomorrow, and in the future, beyond our lifetimes. So basically, the, the question that we're asking at this point is, let's shuffle around. What will the city get out of this rezoning? What will the public get out of this rezoning? And what will it look like five, 10, 20 years from now? So let's talk about the vision for a second. I think you, many of you are probably familiar, this is Kit's Beach in Vancouver. And we pull on this a lot when we've been talking about our parks and open space planning, and what it means for the waterfront at Royal Beach. We think it's, it's a great example to draw on for a number of reasons. One, because it does have a lot of unprogrammed space for markets, for gathering, for public and civic use, like we want to provide for Royal Beach. It's got a number of trails, very rustic, similar to the ones existing on the site today, and similar to the ones that we want to expand and add and continue to, to create for the public. It has civic gathering spaces, and also, kind of like the town of Sydney, it also has, it also has amphitheater space as well. We also look here to the town of Sydney, which is another example we use. It's a fantastic mixed-use area that we can look towards and kind of think, well, what would, what would they be doing in Sydney if they were building in the year 2020, as opposed to the, the 60s and 70s when, when the majority of the downtown Sydney was built out? We've, we've combined a architectural team, a landscape architectural team, planning team, and other consultants to really determine what we think will make this community truly world-class for, for tomorrow and for, for years to come. And, and so what we're trying to do is create a fantastic and open public realm with spaces that are low-maintenance for Colwood staff, but also provide a truly unique experience to the public, and also to Counselor Day's question earlier, providing the same accessibility standards wherever possible to both the Wanda Fuka Parks and Trails standard, as well as I know there's also Rick Hansen Trail and Pathway Standards as well that we will work towards within the reason of our, of our, of our challenging and steep topography at times. I, I think that it's also, when we look at these areas, and whether you're thinking of White Rock, James Bay, or Dallas Road, or any of these places, one of the truly unique things or fantastic things that both the city of Victoria and also Vancouver have done is, as they've developed density, as they've developed, you know, housing institutional uses and other spaces as a seaside community, they've also done an amazing job of ensuring that there is accessible public access to the parklands, to the that there is accessible public access to the parkland, to the waterfront, and to those common areas. This is the public's area that we're going to be dedicating here as part of our rezoning. And we want to ensure that it is a truly spectacular place within the community. To go through some of our land uses really quickly, we've turned the Royal Beach area into three distinct areas. There's the bluffs on the south end running along Machosen Road, the landing, which is the more urban core of the Royal Beach Village, and then the headlands, which is the primarily residential area. If you recall, and from looking at those land use maps and comparing what Gablecraft is presenting or what we're presenting, you'll note that in the 2014 master plan, there was a component of the commons that actually ran into the Royal Beach property across the road at Machosen. And because of the expansion of the commons at Ryder Hedges, as in Royal Bay's proposal, and also keeping in mind that the fact that we're in a very steep area versus their very flat area for the commons, the larger retail component really makes sense to be on the west side of Machosen Road. And then having the smaller mixed-use buildings kind of cascading towards the waterfront makes a lot of sense with the natural topography that we have on our site. And it also creates for two very complementing communities. So to look into the bluffs for a second, the bluffs is primarily a residential area. The average house is probably, you know, a home is going to be between two and three stories, with the exception of a strip along Machosen Road where we're asking for up to six stories in height. The purpose for that is really to draw on being complementary with the commons, being able to respond to that area, also acknowledging that Machosen Road is going to be a collector road for both Machosen residents and future residents. And so responding to what happens at the commons is important to us, as well as responding to both the transport corridor, multi-use pathways, and other major trail connections and pedestrian connections that connect the two properties together. The landing, once again, this is more of our urban core. On the left side of the screen, you'll see a rendering that we prepared by our architectural team, which should be looking down the new Latoria Boulevard toward the civic space at the waterfront. And then on the right-hand side, these are examples of built form from the 2018 official community plan, once again, showing what that urban core and urban village looks like in that area. It's also, it's going to be the hub. It's going to be the place where you're programming your institutional uses, your higher-density residential areas, your civic gathering spaces, your plaza, your pub, maybe even city hall. We haven't quite, yeah, we'll see about that, Royal Bay, and everything else. And then finally, moving north, we have the headlands, which is the lower-density neighborhood. It's lighted up because of a number of reasons, but it is the smaller-form housing and more of your traditional neighborhood design. And the headlands will also be complemented by finishing the perimeter path around the site and a number of artwork and public gathering installations that I'll talk about in a second. Fifty. We look at the number fifty because it is significant to us. It's taken us a bit of time to get to this point. Fifty is the acres of parks and trails that we're dedicating within the Royal Beach neighborhood. The parkland will be a key aspect of this site. It's going to shape the development on the site. And we want, and there is a large amount of ocean view land, parkland, and public space that will be dedicated to the city. And I will say as well that the dedication and a lot of the park programming we're planning to happen very early on on this site, we want to put an exciting amount of uses and we want to make this a vibrant area. We're not talking about 20 years from now. We want to make this that once we've rezoned, once we've started to finish the intersection at Machosen Road and Latoria and do some of those key upgrades, that the city has a clear, accessible, fantastic waterfront and really improve on the parkland that's there today. The second number, 20 million. What's 20 million? Well, on a conservative estimate, that would be the value of the parks and open space land that we would be providing the city of Callwood as part of this rezoning. The figure from this comes from the fact that Callwood right now evaluates park and civic land at about $200,000 an acre. We expect, because it is all waterfront land, that it would be on average double that, $400,000 an acre for oceanfront. But I don't think, it's not really about the dollars in this case. I think that the more important thing to look at here is what would these amenities look like? What I've shown you here is we've got an example of a creekside trail at the ponds. You can see those ponds currently wandering down the side of Latoria Road. We want to really reinforce that or recreate that water feature, make it more of a public amenity, put reflective and contemplative areas around and areas for, you know, seniors' workout equipment, kids' play areas, and also just quiet reflection areas that you can see there on the left. And then on the right, you can see that's actually up in the bluffs. There's this brilliant natural amphitheater there of space that will be dedicated as part of the rezoning in that area. And what we've planned there would be like an outdoor platform where you'd have your yoga, your gathering spaces, some artwork and wayfinding information. And as you can see, there are some, like a gathering space as well. So I think that one neat thing is in the 2014 master plan, there was really a focus on the public plaza, the area right down at the bottom of Latoria Road. And we're not moving away from that. We still think that that should be the focal civic gathering space for the site. But I think the one thing that Seacliff wanted to do, and I spent many days this summer and then also in the freezing rain of September, wandering the site and looking and developing a parts plan that has 10 key special places, each with areas that are designed to meet the goals or meet objectives for different people of different ages and different backgrounds within the community, both current and future residents. This is, you know, gathering spaces, plazas for picnics and barbecues, sitting areas, wayfinding areas, First Nations art, creating an art walk through the site connecting the trail network, as well as the seniors' workout equipment that I mentioned, and children's play area as well. So just to touch on another couple of key areas, we have the plaza space that I mentioned with an amphitheater. Just a fun fact, the gentleman who we have that does the designs and the draft work on some of these plans, he actually designed that public amphitheater that's out in Sydney. He actually won a grant and an award on that. And so we're looking at something, it won't look just like that, but something that's designed with that kind of in mind. And hopefully we'll win an even better award for Callwood, because you seem to be racking those up all the time now. And then also, as you can see on the waterfront space, the idea of having shipping containers where you could have your kayak rentals, beach volleyball, and also some more driftwood art, all different elements that we've talked about is adding as part of that dynamic public realm as we move towards the waterfront. And then last but not least, I couldn't, I've heard every open house we've had, I've had members of council, members of the public saying, "Come on, show us the pub." So I finally thought, without further ado, this is the rendering that we put together for our waterfront pub within the landing. We would ideally have this built within the first couple of years of the project as kind of a key staple. To give an example of this, in the Neuse Bay, where the Seacliff has a development now, at their waterfront, they created a pub and bistro very early on with the idea of really celebrating the area, promoting the lifestyle and everything else. So similar to Fairwinds, we also would like to create a real staple and an anchor for Royal Beach as we begin to build out. So here's the pub, and then underneath you can see they've added another series of garage doors where, similar to the gorge waterfront at Jutland, you would have your boat rentals, your kayak, your non-motorized sports, maybe in the summer when it's a little warmer and less wavy. So 95. Ninety-five is the number of residential taxpayers that you have in Callwood right now, percentage of number of residential taxpayers in Callwood right now. We think that this is significant. So basically, right now, the total revenue from taxation in Callwood is $4.2 million. Of that, $4 million is coming from residential taxpayers. I think this is important because Royal Beach is going to massively increase tax revenues in both the residential development that's going to be created, but also the institutional, the civic, and the commercial additions, the non-residential, as we call them, opportunities that are going to be brought to the site. We'd like to see this figure closer to 60 or 50, 65% of the proposed residential use of the area, and then adding education and other uses that are going to make this site generating more revenue for you. Right now, all we're paying, and it sounds like a lot, we're paying $27,000 a month or $330,000 a year. We think you could be getting more out of us, but that doesn't happen unless there's a rezoning and we can get to that start line that Georgia mentioned. So going back, I think it's important at this point, let's go back to where we are today and talk about what comes next. We think that Royal Beach is more than just numbers. It's a beautiful and outstanding opportunity for the city of Callwood. This much shoreline being available, it's a once-in-a-lifetime or once-in-a-generation opportunity to create something special for future generations. We think that it is currently underutilized as a sitting reclaimed gravel pit, and we'd like to make this a staple for the city of Callwood. And we know as a community, you know, Callwood is known and celebrates the fact that you are a seaside village, a seaside town and community. And we'd like to really make this a distinct feature of this area and turn Royal Beach into the potential village that it could be. And so we want to get started on this. We're keen to roll up our sleeves and get going. And that's my piece on the planning and the future land uses.
Oh, yes, thank you. Perfect. So I just figured we'd finish off here, and I just wanted to leave you with a few of the key points and key messages that we were covered off this evening. So firstly, as far as the planning framework is concerned, consistency with the 2018 OCP. The OCP was updated following extensive public participation, and our application is almost completely in keeping in line with the goals and objectives for that property. The land use question here has already been answered within the OCP. And from a zoning perspective, while significant zoning is already in place, our application has been submitted to update, align, and modernize the zoning according to the vision as set out in the OCP. Flexibility in the zoning is key in order to be able to respond, adapt, and evolve to changing market conditions in a large-scale, long-term project such as this. This is also the conclusion of a multi-year public planning process dating back to the mid-'90s. The process will finally get us to the starting line and allow this development to move forward, meaning as early as next year, parkland could be dedicated, we could be out searching for a new waterfront restaurant operator with construction underway and infrastructure improvements getting installed, to name just a few. Back to technical reports, all technical reports have and will continue to be done as this application and the detailed development proposals move forward. This is a land use application before the city today, and detailed reviews and decisions on the technical aspects will be done as we continue to move forward and as detailed development proposals proceed. Technical aspects will also continue to evolve over time, and we will continue to work with the required professionals in order to ensure that all technical aspects are designed and built for. This opportunity for Callwood, this is an opportunity for Callwood to secure significant new public amenities. Callwood calls itself a seaside community, and as Niall had mentioned, this is a significant portion of the seaside that would be secured for public access in perpetuity. We're also in talking about providing a number of other public amenities, including the 50 acres of ocean view and ocean-fronting parkland. Additionally, this is the start of some material new economic growth for the city of Callwood, not only massively increasing the residential, potential residential tax base, but also providing the city with new commercial and employment opportunities. Years of public consultation have occurred, and we have designed a proposal to deliver on that vision. This entire process will, again, finally get us to the starting line of a project, and that's something that the community and we both really want to see. We have and will continue working closely with staff and feel as though we are seeing progress in regards to next steps as it relates to our application. Based on discussions to date, our expectation and target is to be back before council again in the new year and move forward to readings of the bylaws shortly thereafter, with hopefully the first phases of development underway by mid-next year. At the end of the day, development of a world-class community cannot occur in an adversarial way. We must work together to deliver on this vision as set out in the OCP, and we're really looking forward in doing so. So I wanted to thank council and staff for this opportunity to present our vision and our process this evening. A lot of work and consideration has gone into our application, and we really look forward to moving forward to council and public consideration in the new year. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Just for the benefit of the audience and for public, we are not making a land use decision tonight. This is just completely, we're just here to hear information this evening. We're not making any sort of decisions. So just as a clarification. Going to council, is there any questions? Counselor Kobiyashi.
Through the mayor, thank you very much. Another great presentation. Just some clarification from me right now. So in your timetable, you just said you want to get going with this by mid-next year. So I'm going to back that up right now. So, because I need to understand this. So when are you looking for land use approvals by January?
Well, again, we would hope to be back before committee of the whole. In January, move forward to first and second readings of the bylaw in February, and ideally with the support of council and the public, be at a public hearing by March.
March, okay. And my second question is, there's some really excellent information, and you flashed it up so quickly, I didn't get to read it all. So is it possible that, like, we don't have that handout that you presented? Is it possible, get the council, get that?
Yes, absolutely. We got it to the staff a little bit late this morning, so I apologize.
Not a problem. And so that's great, thank you very much. I just thought maybe you're trying to hide something honest. No, I'm just kidding you. The third question I have is, we were just talking about, the economic benefit of non-residential for our tax basis is much greater because of the rates that are applied right now. But I noticed that the landing area, look, I like the look of that, actually. But then I noticed that right beside it, in the headlands area, it was all residential. So wouldn't, like, I would think the prime real estate, I'm a simpleton here, from Nova Scotia. So it's, wouldn't we want to run that non-residential all the way along? Just a question, just.
Yeah, no, no, fair enough. So we've really tried to follow the vision and intent as set out in the OCP, which did really focus on having this central mixed-use core surrounded by predominantly residential communities to the northern and southern boundaries to create a nice melding into the surrounding neighborhoods. And it's that intent that we've really followed. Additionally, the topography in that northern boundary on the headlands is quite challenging from a building perspective and would be well-suited to non-residential, in our opinion.
Okay, thank you very much, Georgia.
Great, Counselor Logan.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. You had mentioned that it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I'm very encouraged to see some development early on in the project with the development of a pub and restaurant, just to set kind of the tone. And I was encouraged to see some pictures from Kitsellano. And Counselor Kobiyashi and I did a little exploring in September of different public realms, so to speak. And one was down along English Bay and multi-use pathway, which was alive. It was quite crazy, and we were taken aback, actually, about how popular it was. So, you know, I'm encouraged to see that type of concept. I guess, like, timing's everything to me, and really the community has adopted that, the waterfront park already. So it's probably one of the most important parts for the city when developed. So I was wondering if you, and I know we're not, we're talking about land use primarily, but I think the waterfront park and development is a huge component of our consideration when we're looking at land use designation. So I was wondering if you could expand a little bit more on the waterfront park treatments, timing, that sort of jazz?
Yeah, very much so. So from the park's perspective, we are really pulling on that inspiration from the Kitsellano type of uses, where it's a sort of a soft, natural landscaped area, and it creates that very natural vibrancy between the public and the private realm. There's not these hard lines, these hard boundaries, because in our opinion, a world-class community at the end of the day is made by the public spaces and the public realm. And we really like that soft transition that parts of Vancouver have employed, and we've seen it work phenomenally well in those aspects. As Niall had mentioned, we are also absolutely open to providing significant portions of these dedications upfront upon completion of the zoning to secure those public access rights down to the waterfront and provide some of that parkland upfront so that there's not a lot of this, you know, zoning and then stop and waiting. You know, people have been waiting a long time for this to come to fruition, and we're willing to make that a reality upon zoning. So the first to make that a reality upon upon zoning. So the first phase of parkland would absolutely be a be a considerate, we would be open to providing those upfront.
Just one further question, because you answered the question, my my other question on timeframes and zoning, construction, all that jazz. Geotechnical challenges with the site, simply because it was an active mine and you know, they they put material that in different parts of the site that may not be conducive to construction. So did that kind of dictate where some of the density is located? Just because of the types of?
Well, it has. We have been working closely with our geotechnical engineers, one of whom is here tonight and you'll hear from later on this evening. So we have looked at all of the factors that influence the site sort of collectively to help shape the development plans for it, to try to locate development where it's best suited on the property, really searching for those opportunities and constraints. And it really did what we found is is provide for a plan that's actually almost completely in keeping in line with what was already provided for in the land use plans as set out in the OCP. So obviously there was some of that background work influencing those plans from the outset. But yes, so those geotechnical considerations have absolutely been looked at. You know, in detailed, site-specific geotechnical analysis will be done as we move forward to site-specific constraints, but we are confident that the areas what we are proposing for development are feasible to be built on. And that's what the base form, the basis for the application.
Thank you. I am curious, you mentioned economic development and I do certainly understand the desire to expand the the commercial split, if you will. And you talked about the pub, which is wonderful, but probably we're going to need more than one. And the, because there's different styles and different types for for different, that fit different people. But the one thing that hasn't been mentioned is any tourism drivers, no hotels have been mentioned, nothing along that line. And I'm just wondering where does that fit and what is the plan?
I think that's a great question. And and so when it comes to the the breakdown or the balance that we're proposing, Counselor Day, between the the commercial and the residential, the the amount of commercial zoning that we're asking for or non-residential, let's call it square footage, is exactly equated to the the amount that's within the zoning already today, because I think the land use plan in the previous iteration from the 90s had had more more residential on the other side have been chosen and and more commercial towards the waterfront. So we're maintaining that. And the idea is, is really in that landing area and maybe a little bit of mixed use residential along the bluffs and complementing with the commons is is to be able to program for that space for whether it's, you know, post-secondary institution space. And also we 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 have included in our draft zoning bylaw that we provided the city as part of this rezoning, the ability for a conference center, hotel, other tourism activities. I mean, if if the, if the, you know, shouldn't speak out of turn, but you know, if the maritime museum and and other folks were looking at relocating, for instance, we see Royal Beach as being a natural fit for this and actually going back to not not necessarily associated with Fair winds. But in New Neuse Bay recently, VIU opened up a fantastic campus right on the waterfront that was featuring like marine life and and rehabilitation of coastlines. And it was because of that strategic nature that they were able to do so. We see this as a programmed space where it would make sense to, whether it's in standalone buildings or the idea of being part of a mixed use development with housing or rentals above all and seniors housing, all of those items being a key consideration. And really, that's why there is so much non-residential square footage, as you can see within the zoning, because we really like the idea of as the landing develops over time, being able to program those very, those those many uses that will have a key civic and institutional and and quality of life benefit to the residents of Callwood.
Counselor Parkinson.
Thank you, your worship. I guess, like everybody up front and in the audience, incredibly exciting time, exciting project. Just fantastic. And I think I think you did a good job of saying, well, here's what the OCP says, you know, we're we're right in line with that, sort of like the citizens have done their bit, stepped up. Frankly, I liked what I saw on your park plans and how they all sort of came together. There seemed to be sort of a, call it a theme running through that 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 made a lot of sense to me. But I have to say, I didn't feel the same about the rest of the development. You showed a lot of different images of the could be this, could be that. You know, I'm not saying it's not there, but I just didn't, you know, perhaps in future presentations, you could draw that in together, what the overall theme was. Asking for flexibility in zoning makes makes a lot of sense, except, you know, without this sort of the bigger, grander vision, sometimes you have to say no to things that might make sense on the short term if you're looking at the long term. So I think perhaps maybe strengthening that part of your presentations would would be useful. But that's just my two cents worth. If you've got something to say, I'll listen, but I don't really need an answer at this point.
We we're always welcome to criticize. No, what I was going to say is, is the the design guidelines is something that we're currently working through with staff right now and you could anticipate likely in the January 20th committee of the whole, we can do more indicative renderings of cases, examples of what those areas are going to look like. Thank you.
And and then just to carry on a little bit, I mean, you've talked about a number of the the studies that that need to be done and come together on the major, the water shore and stuff like that. Presumably they're all coming as part of this package and we'll have time to be digging into those. Yeah.
Yes, a variety of those reports, or a majority of those reports have been submitted and but there is a mass quantity that staff is working through.
Yeah, nobody tells us, nobody tells us anything around here. And I guess the final thing, I I should sort of, you know, put my cards to the table. I personally am very concerned about all the sediments and the sediment ponds on site and how you're going to deal with those and what's going to go on in it. And I hear your thought, your 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 discussion about, you know, do the right, do the studies at the right time and this and that. But my concern is that those are very impactful on what could and should be done on that site. And so I would be, I personally will be looking for some information and solutions on on those before I could support a rezoning.
Absolutely understood. And I do hope that our engineers will be able to provide you a little bit more clarity on those questions this evening.
Great, thank you. So we are now going to move on to five, which is public participation. So I would like to actually invite anyone present in the public to take an opportunity to address council, to present concerns or ask questions of council regarding the two presentations. Twenty minutes has been allocated for public participation. I would ask that you try and limit your your discussion or comments to about two minutes. If you can, that would just allow the most amount of people to speak. Also, if you wish to speak a second turn, I would ask that you wait until everybody has had an opportunity to speak once. Finally, if if you do, if you are going to, or if you would like to make a comment of tonight, I would ask that you actually line up, because what happens is one person stands up, they say their thing, then they go and sit and then I go, is there anybody else? And then one person stands up and we're doing that all night. So if you're interested in lining up, that would be actually helpful. If there's any public who would like to make a comment, this is this is an opportunity. And I'm sorry, public, if you could just make your name, your address, if you don't wish to be, you're going to be on camera. If you don't wish your name and address to be on camera, you could just go to the recording secretary afterwards and just give them your address and thanks.
Your worship, counsel, my name is Ian Ward. I am a homebuyer at 370 Latoria Road in the Royal Bay Development. My question, initial question revolves around the presentation by Mr. Flure from Gablecraft as it relates to community engagement and the what we learned component. And I wonder if council is aware that there was a perhaps inadvertent omission that the last formal engagement with residents of Royal Bay actually occurred two days ago on Saturday, December 14th at Olympic View. And the tone of that, you know, if council is aware that the tone of that community engagement certainly juxtaposed with what was presented in the sense that there was a very real undercurrent of concern, anger, and the word misrepresented was used a significant number of times by the almost 80 homeowners of the current Royal Bay Development. Secondly, we heard mentioned by Gablecraft that they are, you know, aligning with a developer on the other side of the the Latoria South proposal you heard tonight around traffic and parking studies. And I would just question council if in fact, based on the current issues that have been identified with traffic there anecdotally by residents of Royal Bay and the previous zoning amendment granted to the high school, if there are any plans from council to commission an independent and unbiased traffic study to determine the long-term impacts on the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? There is. Okay, you you can speak in a moment. Come on up. I, no, 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 I'm sorry. But just just so that everybody knows, in general, we try not to clap, boo, anything from a council standpoint. Ultimately, we're all neighbors and so we're all trying to support each other and we're trying to to come from this. So we don't want to be putting one person against another person or or allow somebody to feel awkward because they may have a differing opinion than than a speaker. So I would just ask that that we don't clap, boo, or anything along those lines. Please come up.
Thank you, counsel and your worship. My name is Kyle Johnson. I live on Curlew Street in the Royal Bay area and I think it's the commons. My question revolves around what is council and the city of Callwood doing to mitigate the risk of further sell-off of of land and whatnot of Gablecraft to other developers that are potentially sort of impacting that that future plans and looks that Gablecraft has has mentioned, such as the community center that was discussed and and whatnot in that land is now gone and that that plans out along Dunlin, they're selling off partials of 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 land. And just curious if there's any concern on council's part that the potential future vision that's being presented may not happen if the economic climate doesn't allow for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll give my name at the side. I moved to this neighborhood three and a half years ago and walk my dog in Royal Bay weekly, if not more than that, when she demands it. When I moved here, I moved here for Royal Bay. What I didn't realize is there's very little to walk to. You can't really pick up groceries. If you want to grab something after hours, Royal Bay Bakery is fabulous, but they're closed. And so I'm really looking forward to there being amenities that you can get to and it being more of a village feel than what it is now. It's beautiful, but I'd love to be able to use my neighborhood more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, counsel, I was people from Proctor Place in Royal Bay. I look, overlook Latoria, so I can see the traffic. It's a problem now. Already. With the density that's being talked about, when we went to open houses, we asked about parking. Didn't really get satisfactory answers. We asked about accessibility for the waterfront. Parking for people that don't live there, so that we could access all these amenities. It was questionable. What parking would be provided? At one point, I was told, well, we could always park on the side of the one road that went down, the extension of Latoria, and then walk down, or we could park across and walk down. That's not accessible. Another comment I have, and I was really glad to see Cynthia raise that about, why is there no plans for hotel? Why is there no push for the tourism that we could bring to the area with all these things that are being planned to to provide? I don't understand that. When I see inserts in the Times Colonist, come to Sydney, they'll have pages of things that are available. They have hotels there. The pier is an amazing waterfront hotel and it's well-used. We could have that in Royal Bay. We could bring tourism. We could benefit from tourism dollars because of all these things that are being put in place. All of those walking paths, we could have another West Coast trail. We could have all of that. We could promote Emily Carr. As some of you know, she was painted the gravel pit, she painted him a chosen in Callwood. We could have tourism. If we were to put an insert into the Times Colonist, what would we promote? How do we bring people with their tourism dollars? So I was really happy to hear you say that.
Good evening, your worship, counsel. My name is Deborah McKenzie. I just wanted to seek clarification from the presentation with Sea Crest as to they've put a lot of numbers out there, 4,000 doors, et cetera. Exactly what is the number, or the square footage of commercial space that they intend to develop on that property? Because from the meetings that I have attended, the community meetings, I've been told that the plan is to actually decrease the amount of commercial space and move it up to the commons so that they could focus focus on more residential development. That's not really the vision that I was sold from Gablecraft. They sold me a landing with a lot of small boutique stores and restaurant pubs, et cetera, that sort of fulfill a destination kind of shopping area. I think one of the last meeting at council, the councillor with the pop-up coffee shop, councillor identified that he was concerned about the greenhouse gases emitted while people waited in line at the drive-through. I think council should be very much aware about how much people are going to be traveling to other areas to be fulfilling their retail, you know, expenditures. And so what sort of timeline are these developers going to be given to put in this commercial space? Because they have also indicated, because of the economics of everything, that the desire is to fulfill the retail or rather the residential building prior to in putting in the commercial properties. I also attended the meeting with Gablecraft on Saturday. Gablecraft admitted, or not admitted, but indicated to the public that was there that their expertise lies in residential development. I also am concerned about how much the land they're going to sell off for the commercial development. And if you are going to have to be voting on or not voting, but reviewing bylaw and variants of changes from the plan that they are submitting to you in the next several weeks. And I hope that you take really good consideration from the community when you review their proposals. Thank you.
Just before you go, sorry, can I just get a clarificate? Because we were talking about two different developments and so you wanted to know specifically about the Royal Beach and the this commercial square footage. I think we can get you that answer right now. I thought I'd heard it was during the presentation, it was 980,000 square feet. Is that correct or am I misspoke? I misspoke. So sorry, 868,000 square feet is is the commercial that's that's planned on beach. Oh, and I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to if that's an increase or a decrease. It's the same. Sounds like, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Members of council, my name is Jim Hartshon. I live at 789 Guiden Way, I think it is. I forget quite often. So the answer is, there's 800, the present zoning is 880,000 non-residential square footage and 926 residential units on 70% of the site. And there's a couple of questions. I think Alderman Day's question is a good one. But it's also many of the other questions other members of council could ask. The zoning permits many things and that's what we're, we're trying to accomplish, a zoning issue, not actually show you pretty pictures that we're not going to develop. I agree, a tourism-based center there with a hotel would be great. But the way development works, and I'm going to walk across here, I've been a developer for a long, long time and developed many, many residential and commercial developments. So real estate develops like a duck. Residential retail, residential retail, residential retail, residential retail, residential retail. I could go on for quite some time, but I'll stop. The reality is development only happens when there's a, when there's a need and a demand. And this this company, Seacliff, they're extremely well-capitalized company and we're proud to be involved with this project and and that's, that's all valid. I think some of the questions about selling real estate off, those things happen in development. They're valid questions. But I would say very clearly that this development and the concept of providing parkland to the council, to the taxpayer early on, giving the things that we want to do as opposed to wait for certain doors to be developed is important. It's not true whatsoever of the comment that was made about doing residential before commercial or non-residential. That's not the game plan. It's a duck. Remember a duck. Residential retail, residential. Residential retail, residential retail. There are some residential things could happen here, there's some retail things could happen here. And we think very strongly that, that the retail center around the Latoria corner is the right thing to do. And council might remember, you can check with your staff. In the OCP, there's a, and the zoning, there's a very large part of commercial that's over Latoria, east of Latoria, going down the hill, which really didn't make a lot of sense to me as a developer. And we're happy to cooperate with, because it should be on the other side in our opinion. So those are the things that we've done and any other questions we can answer. But as Georgia said, this is a start of a very long road and a very large development with very, very capable people, uh, behind it. And until that changes, I'll be here supporting it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kim Griffin. I've been a homeowner in the Colwood area on the Chosen Road for the last eighteen years. My son personally goes to Royal Bay and I drive through Royal Bay very regularly. Love the new development and the new homes in the area. I also am really looking forward to finally seeing the old gravel pit finally being developed into some more commercial space. Um, I love the volleyball court, beach volleyball court that was just in the recent times just being in place. Uh, I know that we ended up, I've got teenagers, so we ended up going down there in the summer, made use of it, um, instead of always being just down on the lagoon. Um, I think it'll be great to have something like a restaurant or pub in walking distance as opposed to having to drive up to a nice restaurant up at Bear Mountain for twenty minutes or up to Olympic View, which is a little bit outdated. It's nice to have something new, something fresh on the waterfront and something nice instead of driving all the way downtown and then usually capping all the way home. Uh, and grocery stores, I'd love to see any smaller shops staying within Colwood. Um, something along the waterfront. Uh, I only go out to Sydney to visit my old parents and we always go through Sydney and it's an amazing walk-through there. I'd love to see something like that in the community. Um, and we've got a lot of young families as well now in the neighborhood. So I'm looking forward to seeing the new development, new growth. Thank you.
Um, your worship and council, my name's Laurie Ingalls. I live at thirty-three forty-seven Hatley Drive. And, um, I, I've been quite interested in hearing about the plans that have been talked about tonight and, uh, I would just say that, uh, I'm sometimes accused of being a dreamer and that may be the case. But one thing that, uh, I am interested in is, uh, I've heard talk in the past about, um, the development of, uh, an arts center. And, uh, I know that there's been some discussion of that and chatter i- in the community and so forth. And, uh, I'd just like to, uh, put it on the table that my interest would be to see, um, you know, the development of a spectacular building. Uh, I'm thinking the Sydney Opera House, but in miniature, you know? Uh, you know, uh, I was at an event, uh, earlier this week at, uh, Royal Theatre and, uh, I think it's safe to say that, uh, Victoria is, uh, primed for, uh, you know, a lovely art center. Something like that on the waterfront with, uh, cruise ships coming in and, uh, being able to see it and, and so forth and drawing people, you know, out to our community for a change might be worth considering. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I will give one last chance. Is there anyone else who would like to speak publicly?
Michelle Brown, Proudfoot Place. I just have a quick question now that the development part is over. I'm wondering how you decide what videos you post for your meetings? I've gone online, uh, a few times and wanted to review what's happened at a meeting or I've missed a meeting and often there are no videos available even though the cameras are here. If you could just answer that.
Sure, you know, absolutely. So as, as you probably, this is great for everybody. So as you probably realize, we now have a new, uh, camera system. The, the old camera system's behind you and, uh, we've been playing with it. Obviously I'm still learning it and what happened was we ran into a couple situations where we thought we were recording and they weren't recording. And so, uh, that, that, that was just a glitch. Now from a, every council meeting's definitely, um, supposed to be available and, and accessed. I don't know, are we archiving or are we showing committee the whole meetings? I'm not sure. Yeah, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Martin. Just to clarify, we have had some technical challenges and unfortunately this evening is one of those evenings. Uh, when that has happened, we have been able to capture the audio portion and that should be up there. We switched providers right around November the fourth and we are in the process right now of retrieving all of the previous videos, uh, so prior to November the fourth, from the initial service provider and they will be available on our site pretty soon. But we did have technical challenges this evening and we did not capture, um, video tonight. Thank you.
Oh, I've been spending the whole time working this camera.
Your worship and council, sorry, follow-up question. Um, on the, um, Seacliff proposal, there was twelve-story, um, buildings in their, um, in their mock-up. Is that already within zoning permits or is that pending further?
Yeah, no, the OCP presently, uh, states that you can build up to twelve stories, correct? I'm looking to our Director of Engineering and Planning. Yeah, so it's already in the zoning.
Thank you.
Excuse me, it's not in the zoning, it's in the OCP. My, my bad.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, Bob McCullough, four-eight-two Regency Place. Um, I'm going to, uh, give you a little bit of homework today. If you haven't already done this sometime before the weekend, take a walk up the path, the concrete path behind the high school. Doesn't matter which end you start from, either in the community and down or from this, from Latoria Road and up, and turn around and look out to the ocean. And you will see that that is a massive bowl all the way from Esquimalt to Washington State. And the sightline from where you stand pretty much establishes the roof lines of all of the housing that's already in existence, right out to where the sea hits, the, the, uh, sky hits the sea. And I'm going to recommend that you try and maintain that bowl. Emily Carr didn't paint here for fun. She was protesting exactly what's going on with uncontrolled development. That is a natural datum that anybody can use to see whether, when you punch into that air envelope above, you've stolen public view. This is in the DNA of the people in this city. Everybody knows it and if you take it, you're converting it to private. Please do it with great care and attention. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to move on then, um, which takes us to, uh, six, which is new business. Uh, this is going to be six point one. Uh, I'm going to look to our, uh, Director of Engineering regarding the Royal Bay, uh, Royal Beach Summary of Coastal Hazard Assessments and Geotechnical Analysis Official Community Plan Application.
Thank you. Let's just wait for the secretary to go on. Good. Uh, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Just, um, maybe the, the camera's not going to flip around? Do I wait for it or just? There we go, good. We here tonight, after these excellent presentations and public input, thank you very much for everyone, um, to talk about the shoreline assessment summary that is part of the Royal Beach Development Package. So committee did consider on November twenty-fifth that, um, we would be bringing forward reports specific to, um, items relevant to Royal Bay and Royal Beach's redevelopment. This report tonight and presentation tonight is specific to the Royal Beach Summary of Coastal Hazard Assessment and Geotechnical Analysis. Uh, staff have received several questions before the meeting. I'll endeavor to cover some of those while I'm speaking tonight, but just to also let you all know that Jay Mcinter of Thurber Engineering, the geotechnical consultant, is here today as well as Will Hilson from Northwest Hydraulic Consultants and, um, they're available for questions as well. So tonight, we are not asking you for decision. This is presented to council tonight for their information as part of what we spoke about earlier in the year as coming to committee. Um, the decisions will form part of the rezoning that's coming forward as spoken about by our applicants. That'll be in the new year. So again, this is not a decision tonight, but presented for information. The staff report dealing with the geotechnical constraints and the land use will come in the first quarter of next year. So in regards to the process, the proposal, as we've heard, is to amend the official community plan, the zoning for Royal Beach. Staff have requested and committees agreed to receive technical studies relevant to the shoreline for the coastal hazardous, for the coastal hazardous, for the coastal hazardous, for the coastal hazardous, for the coastal assessment, geotechnical setback assessment and shoreline monitoring. The intention is to provide this for information and we'll be reflecting that with diagrammatic, uh, pictures to, so you can see how that translates to the land as well. And there were several questions raised from the presentation that I hope to be able to address and, um, hopefully pay, uh, pen out some of the future land use considerations that are at play today. As the background, we've heard well-tabled tonight, uh, we're looking specifically at Royal Beach, which is the image on your left. And you can see with the image on the right where the property boundary is where Georgia spoke to tonight. It does not extend right out to the waterfront. That waterfront is actually created land and so their property line is back, you can see it identified in that picture in front with crown land in between the property line and the shoreline. Some of the historic land uses that are at play on the site, also we saw, um, presented from Georgia tonight as well. Um, it was reclaimed or it was a mining operation, quarry operation for a number of years. It ceased with plans for the waterfront community. Um, and there are sediment ponds that are on-site still that were part of the quarrying operations at the time. As Georgia and Seacliff, um, outlined in their presentation, the distinct areas are defined in that image of your left. We've got the headlands at the north, the landing in the center of the site which accesses Latoria, road straight down to the waterfront and the bluffs. So the conceptual plans includes those three development areas and you'll notice that that stormwater feature running through the center of the site is intended to be retained. The light green that you see on the image is intended to be park space, which, um, you also heard speaking, spoken of tonight. One of the critical things that Georgia and Niall did mention is the fact that the shoreline insofar has been considered as what's called a green shores approach, which means that there are no shoreline hardling, hardening, uh, considerations presently in the report or as considered by the geotechnical consultants or hazard consultants on the site. One meter level, one meter of sea level rise has been considered for twenty-one hundred and two meters by twenty-two hundred relative to the two thousand, um, Flynnrod eighteen, two thousand and eighteen requirements. Shoreline erosion is two meters of glee, global sea level rise, um, which is working right into the site and you'll see images later on about how that translates into the land. And the two meters of sea level rise were recommended to determine the location of the bluffs and consider the toe of the bluff area. And in terms of the geotechnical seismic and stability analysis, the shoreline estimate is for that two meters, twenty-one-ten guidelines for legislative landslide assessments and then several other codes that have been considered in the consideration before you. So in regards to the future natural boundary is considered by twenty-one hundred. You can see an image here of the coast as it sits right now, where the crown land sits and the present toe of those bluffs as they sit on the land as of today. Top of bluffs, how the land is being affected by the shoreline is eroding the bluff essentially is and depositing materials as we go to the east of the lands. As we move forward and project into the two-meter level sea level rise, essentially what that's happening is, is eroding that bluff portion of the lands. And so that, um, erosional slope will continue to move back, moving inward to the site or moving westward to the site. And you see represented here a diagrammic, a digraphic image that's intended to represent roughly how that's going to move into the site. It's not actual and physical and surveyed because we're trying to project out to twenty-one hundred and twenty-two hundred. So you'll see the future bluff toe and the top of the present bluff and how that translates backwards and how that toe shown in the blue line is intending to push inward or to the west into the subject lands. As that relates to the site and how it's being to develop, you'll notice that, that purple area, and if I just quit, flip to here and then flip back, is starting to get pushed back and affected by those setback lines. The static incisive setbacks for the buildings and structures is set from those erosional boundaries, but also the earthquake load that's suspected on the site, which needs to be considered in concert and parallel with that shoreline erosion profile. As we continue to look at the site and as it runs further, you'll can see that that pushback of that slope continues to occur. That's one of the factors of the, of the green shores approach is allows natural erosional processes to continue across the land and it always, it always steps in times council can, could consider to affect that shoreline by hardening. But the example is before you today and the considerations that are insofar are about a green shores approach, which means that those bluffs will continue to erode and continue to deposit material onto the beach and sediment as it goes downward. But it's affecting the developable portion of the lands, moving that westward into the site. You'll see there, there's a specific comment on the slide that the historic sediment ponds will require stabilization works. There's one pond that's located just at the bottom. It's right where the arrow's pointing where it says future natural boundary. That's directly affected by that translation westward as that sea level rises. The findings indicate that seismic ponds upon the bluffs will be impacted. Recommendations suggest that infrastructure such as roads and utilities can be placed in such a manner as to conform to the static setback on the load, on the, on the lands. So the parkland, and it's really important to understand and translate where those property boundaries sit and how that erosional influence will happen over the course of that sea level rise to twenty-two hundred essentially. As that land gets pushed back, the erodible portion of that slope and that foreground is the, um, crown's land firstly, and then it starts to erode into the site. So as that shown as parkland, it's that park space that's supposed to be intended to be impacted as opposed to the built form, which is recessed to the west, um, west components of the land. So the potential park area may increase with refinement to the development process because you can look to affect, um, some of the shoreline erosional influences up the bank by bringing about hardening measures. We are, as Georgia pointed out, we are talking about extended timelines. We're talking eighty years to twenty-one hundred for the one-meter sea level rise consideration. And, um, for two meters of sea level rise, we're talking about a hundred and eighty years away. So there is time to make decisions on that green shores approach, but that's what we're considering here. The impact of the shoreline erosion over time will change the characteristics of the park as the bluffs recede landward, um, essentially reducing that top of the bluff area and, um, and shrinking it in. The comparative that we like to speak about at the staff level is essentially Dallas Road Downtown. We may not be aware, but that, that waterfront walkway has actually been picked it up and shifted inland as that coastal erosion still occurs along that bluff portion for the portion that hasn't been hardened in the downtown waterfront. Um, I'm aware it's been moved back once or twice, but that's the same sort of consideration that we're thinking about here. So the improvements to the built form, the improvements of the development of the land and where those will be situated, we put into a consideration where it's geotechnically, seismically suitable and that will also account for the erosional of that, of that bank portion of the lands as we progress forward in those hundred and eighty years. There's an image on the right part of your screen of that green shores approach. Um, I recognize that it may be a term that we're all not equally familiar with, but, um, it's a, it's gaining ground and momentum because hardening shorelines has, has caused to show negative effect upstream and downstream of wherever the hardening factor has occurs. We know that some of the deposits that are affecting our Spitton Peninsula are from the, the aggregate that's been dumped in, into the water over the course of years and quite honestly, that the erosion that's naturally occurred on that slope as well as what was aggravated by the gravel pits and the gravel pit workings. So this area has been studied by Seacliff for number, numerous years, or number, uh, numerous years is what it's been studied for. And you can see there's images on the bottom which show how the coastal and the beach has changed over the course of time. As the gravel pit and quarry operations has ceased, the deposit factors of the gravel mining and dumping and loading onto barges has stopped and the natural processes of shoreline erosion is essentially what's occurring along, along the beach there. The shoreline was studied between two thousand and five and two thousand and seventeen and overall it speaks to relatively minor changes that are happening there. The cobbling of beaches or the additional sediment load in some areas after a storm is a natural occurrence on the, on the shoreline. This is just an example of monitoring station number six. There are, there's been four separate surveys at six separate monitoring stations and it shows approximately seven and a half meters of recession generally in the last twelve years of that beach profile. See in the image in the left where those monitoring points have come, have gone to, um, that they're all the way from the entire stretch of coastal community, um, and affecting part of the Coldbrook Peninsula and, um, all the way along the beach. In regards to the historical sediment ponds, with the shoreline recession and the sea level rise, the bluffs and the top of the bluffs will be impacted. Over time, with or without development, sea level rise is predicted to occur. So there will be erosion, there will be ground improvements required on the land to stabilize any of those ponds and any of those areas that we are aware of today. And the stabilization will be necessary to prevent the release of contaminated sediment from those ponds and also to stabilize the shoreline where it affects those ponds as well. where it affects those ponds as well. The recommended improvements will be based on the subsurface profile, overall height of the bluff slope and development proposal and grading concept and location of improvements. Staff are not aware and we are not presently working with the developer to figure out the details of those improvements. They're expected to come at either the development permit time, subdivision time, or building permit time reflective of the area being affected by that load consideration. So further analysis is required as I've indicated, the time of either subdivision or development permit. In regards to the financial consideration, the improvements associated with geotechnical requirements will be essentially the responsibility of the developer and it will be placed to the developer of the lands, which may be Seacleft or as we've heard tonight, could be sold as we've heard a concern from the communities that the land could be sold off. That doesn't change the responsibility of the developing agent, whether that be Seacleft or the land that's sold, to deal with the with the impacts of where they're citing the building at the time of citing that building. So the time of subdivision or development permit is when we will drill those down as those details to be able to look at the specific considerations relevant to the development of the land, specific to those land areas. For the city, the financial applications are essentially located in the parklands. All those green areas that were shown in front of the built form, as you remember those purple images sliding that land area back, well, all the the remnant lands from those built forms out to the coast are essentially proposed to be parkland. Staff are working with the development team to try and locate those improvements far as far back as possible. But we're not shying away from the fact that to truly activate some of that coast and to truly activate the activate the public amenities in those areas, we will need to locate and be part of part of that shoreline that's likely subject to erosion. And so we do expect to have to relocate some park infrastructure over the course of time. And we do expect that those burdens will fall to us in the next hundred and eighty years. The strategic plan, as we've heard well represented tonight by both developers, the Royal Beach developer and Royal Bay developer, have been well considered in the development proposals. The application is to amend the OCP and the zoning is to rezon the lands to create a site specific comprehensive zone. So in summary, shoreline recession will occur to the shoreline erosion and sea level rise. Preliminary setbacks are suitable for planning purposes to guide land associated with the OCP amendments and rezoning applications. And further analysis will be required at the time of subdivision and development permit. This is an item that we've actively spoken about with the geotechnical engineer to try and identify in front of you tonight what may be necessary. It'll take more for their detailed in analysis of the ground as we're getting closer to it. And those recommendations will be coming forward. Thurber has been working on the site for multiple years. And if there's questions that I'm unable to answer, they're here in the audience tonight to help those help provide those answers to you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Brent. Counsel, is there any questions? This is, this report is only here for information purposes. Counselor Day.
Thank you. You didn't mention the contamination of some of the settling ponds. And I didn't see any recommendation for how that will be dealt with.
So the contamination is handled by the province in terms of a certificate of contamination. And what's what occurs is the developers is required to file a certificate of how they've dealt with or aware of the contaminants on the lands and submit to the province for their review and acceptance. We have received that for two of the areas, excepting the center bluff area. The developer has been directly spoken to about this and has has agreed that they're on it. However, it doesn't express any concerns. So in regards to the actual containment and containment of the areas in the actual ponds, they're intended to stay. And the geotechnical engineer can be able to speak more about it if you'd like to get into some specifics.
Okay. I do have concerns because by nature of the parkland dedication, which is anticipated to be early on in the process, it is the parkland that is actually retaining it. That's what's between the settling ponds and the water is the parkland. So as the parkland is eroding away, I think there is potential for the city to be very on the hook in the future for any spills that could occur as a result of erosion.
So you'll see this slide here that the seismic setbacks are generally more limiting than the coastal erosion setbacks. And so the built form is actually intended to set those footings deep enough or to contain the areas well enough that seismically they will stand the test of time. And that's considering up to twenty two hundred, so a hundred and eighty years away in terms of seismic conditions in regards to, and that's in relation to that erosional plane. And so the the erosional factors only in fact so far, but the seismic were considered to be more limiting than the erosional factors. And so the containment and the built form on those buildings would have to consider all of that. As I say, the geotechnical geotechnical engineers here, we can call them up to be more specific. However, we may not be as specific as you'd like at this present time.
I would certainly like to hear what's planned for containing it in a seismic event.
Let me introduce Jay McIntyre from Thurber Engineering.
Hi, Aaron Council. So there's a couple of things. The the ponds extend quite close in one area in particular to the existing shoreline or the crest of the slope. And so as as Brent mentioned, regardless of whether we develop or not, we're expecting some erosion to occur. And in some areas, the containment dikes that were constructed to contain the the sediments originally are going to erode away and eventually the sediments would be exposed and could could be released through erosion. The sediments were obviously generated through the washing of aggregate. They've they washed the fine particles off of the gravel. It contained naturally occurring metals from from the sands and gravels, but they just became concentrated over time by washing them and putting them all into a slurry and then pumping them. So it's naturally occurring metals that have been concentrated. The general approach is to cap these ponds with a minimum amount of clean soil so that there's no public exposure. And that would be the plan for the most part for the, as far as I understand it, that's the plan for the the bluffs where we would, there might be some opportunities to change some of the grades, but mostly would be capping the existing sediments with a few meters of clean soil. And in order to prevent, so over time, like I mentioned, there's going to be erosion, there could be a seismic event. So the plan is to protect future developments with some sort of a stabilizing stabilizing structure, like a retaining structure that would stabilize the upper part of the slope and prevent it from from failing. So that is something that would be the that's that would be a site specific design depending on exactly what you're trying to protect behind it. So hopefully that answers your.
Well, I'm just, I'm curious if you're, it looks like the plan is to build on top of the settling ponds.
Yes.
So I'm not sure how capping it is seismically safe, given that the liquefaction problem in a seismic event.
So we've looked at the liquefaction potential of the ponds in general. We've looked at it several locations and we've determined that the ponds generally are not liquefiable because they're just don't have enough sand in it. It's it's a plastic deposit. It's got high, the plasticity is too high. So there are discreet pockets that exist in areas where they were like pumping the this, when they were actually adding the sediments to the ponds. In some of these areas that they stayed there for a long time, sands would settle out first and then the finer fraction would settle out later. So there are some areas which do have some sands, but they tend to be localized and and not continuous. So from what we've seen so far, the analyses we've done, we don't expect widespread liquefaction just because the material is not liquefiable. There could be some softening of the material, which we would look at, we would do site response analyses. But the general idea is to cap the soil and then put more sand on top to preload it and that squishes it down. This over the twenty five years that the ponds have been decommissioned, a lot, I mean, obviously the water has drained out. The ponds aren't nearly as soft. You know, you could never have walked, you would have sunk into them, right? So it's, they've stiffened with time. They generally are like a firm consistency, but when we preload them, they're going to get even stronger. You're still not going to, they are still going to be most suitable for lightly loaded, relatively lightly loaded structures, so not like high rise type buildings.
So when the when the school was built on the settling ponds that were newer, the ponds that are by the ocean are older.
Yes.
There was that same method was used, but at that time, it was talked about that that method of preloading the settling ponds was not going to work for the older ponds?
That's a good, that's a good question. And sorry, did you have, am I cutting you off?
Well, just I've, I've, I've seen animals killed in those settling ponds, deer. My dog got stuck in there once and barely made it out. So they are a significant concern?
I had a technician get stuck in them too, and we had to pull him out. Yeah, they are, when they're active, they're dangerous. There's no doubt about it. But what happens quite quickly is a crust forms. You can have equipment operating on it and it does dry out and 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 get stronger. So for the for the school site, what ended up happening there is the the fields are obviously a bit bigger overall than the structure. So the southern third of the development was we dug all the sediments out and went down to the natural pit floor. The ponds or the northern portion where the playing fields are, that area was partially subexcavated. And then they added the capping soil and the preload on top of that to develop that area. The reason the the building, the tolerance is required by the the school board for this for the building and the loads they needed and the spans they have between columns just precluded any other option besides digging it out. They could have piled the structure, but that was not something wanted to do. So it was because of the heavy, like it's a very large school, as you can imagine, it's not like a conventional like wood framed house. So the tolerances are a lot different. So given the amount of time that's taken place, certainly the other approach, the partial excavation and preloading is is considered adequate for for what we're looking at.
I understood there were additional seismic considerations when they just did the addition? So I'm just wondering how that impacts the process?
So they have, like, the structure needs to, it's a different, it's part for the building code. So it's a lot different in terms of the structural requirements and they have to seismically anchor the addition. So we had to drill down and like put deep anchors into the to the, we had to investigate the depth of rock so we could get seismic anchors. Again, that's something that you wouldn't do for a residential subdivision, structures in a residential subdivision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to go to Counsel Parkinson in a second. We have two engineers who are going to be asking you the next question. So Jay, I hear it's your birthday today. It's the rumor. Birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jay. This is the worst singing ever. All right. So we're gonna, we're not gonna be any, that's the nicest you're gonna get. Counsel Parkinson.
Thank you. I didn't realize it was Jay McIntyre's birthday. I thought it was Jay McIntyre's birthday. I guess I've called him the wrong name forever. Firstly, good, good to see you, Jay, and good to have your advice on this. So if I understand the setback lines, at some point, wherever the shoreline may be, the bluffs, we would expect to slump back to a stable slope. And wherever we take as the starting point based on sea level rise and accretion, that slope is whatever it's going to be. And that's where you'd come out as being the static setback line. Is that is that correct?
Well, so the way that slopes recede is they 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 tend to break off in very brittle failures at at steep angles like we're seeing, and they deposit themselves at the bottom of the slope. So you get this sort of steep upper part in a kind of a wedge shape bottom. So over time, that process occurs. It it doesn't actually like eventually get flatter. It just always is going to continue using doing that sort of process.
Okay.
So it just depends on how far you want to look ahead.
Okay. And so the seismic setback line, would that be under a shaking event? The top part would flatten out? Is that where we get a further inland from the static setback?
Yeah. So that, so just, I'll just quickly run down how we we came across this approach. And I can't speak to the erosion, the coastal erosion process, but what what happens there is we we get the prediction of what the slope's going to, where the toe of the slope is going to look like in a hundred or a hundred and eighty years. So that all, so we just just wipe all that land away. And then we have to assume what the slope profile will look like. So we, since there's no proposed sort of modifications to the existing processes, we're not looking at hardening things or what have you, we just assume the same shape of the existing slope and we'll just slide it in twenty five, thirty five meters, whatever we've been told by the the consultant. And then we do our, then we start our analysis from this sort of future slope. And then we look at static stability, which has a factor safety one point five. I know there was a question about that. What what's a factor safety? So that's a, that's a just a very common factor safety, a standard factor safety for static loading. And then we also look at the the building code earthquake, which is a one and two, twenty five hundred year earthquake. And so that is a deformation. That's, that's a, the first one looks at a factor safety, the seismic looks at what's an allowable amount of deformation that you can accommodate. And that's based on provincial guidelines, legislative landslide assessment guidelines, which say your your structures, your houses can't move more than a certain amount. So we just keep moving that setback back until we've got the deformations predicted below that threshold. So the, there's not really a factor safety associated with it, just a deformation. And that that tends to be the most, the largest setback. So that's the one that has been recommended for for planning purposes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Now, if I could get on to my my pet subject, I guess, the the settling ponds, you you think they can just be capped and and built upon?
Yes.
And so that would set whatever the whatever the level is now, that would set a minimum level of some number of meters above that.
So that that is a trick. So the the grades are already higher than than the road. So the you need to put some more fill on it to support the future foundations. And then you'd have to surcharge preload it for amount of time, could be, you know, depending on how slowly, how thick the sediments are, it could take a while. Then then that induces settlement. So you'll actually lower the grade slowly. I can't, I can't tell you off the top of my head what the settlement would be. I know in the west, in Royal Bay, we we had over almost a meter of settlement over the ponds there. So they do settle if if you load them up enough. So there will be settlement of the ponds and that will sort of offset the the capping height. There's also an opportunity to possibly rebalance because some of the ponds are at different elevations. So you could, you could potentially rebalance them all to a consistent elevation.
And and once, once you've done that, and so you have the sort of capped and preloaded sediments inside the old sand burms around those ponds, if there's infrastructure running between those two, are we expecting differential settlement? Like if we had a water line and it sort of traversed across the sediments and then through the the burms between the two ponds, would we be at risk of having some differential settlement and shearing off water lines?
I don't really think so, Stuart. I just like, if you look at the existing Michozen Road, it goes through four cells with with burms in between. And I mean, that road's performing, sorry, I could tell it's performed really well for twenty five years. I don't see any sort of differential movements. The sediments there are thinner, I grant granted. But a lot's happened in twenty five years. The sediment, the compressibility has been reduced and, you know, it will be reduced further with the surcharging. So I don't see that as a huge design you know, factor.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you. That 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 makes you feel a whole bunch better. Appreciate that. You know, some lingering concerns, perhaps if you're listening at the back about the what that might mean for the height of things compared to the road, Michozen Road, if you have to be, you know, everything your building starts a few meters above the road and goes up and we might be interested to see how that relationship works. But frankly, if Jay tells me these things are going to work, I believe.
Excuse me, Counsel Baxter?
My questions are.
Uh, my questions are for Mr. Mullner.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I just want to preface this question by saying, you know, that one of the presenters sort of, I think, made a bit light of the 180 years because it's longer than the time since Confederation. But I don't think it's anybody, part of anybody's plan to pack up the city and close it down, you know, before 180 years. I don't think it's ever on the plans to pack, pack it up and close it down. So as you know, having been an approving officer for a while now, when, when a property's created, a road with properties either side of it, that's probably the longest lasting thing we ever create. And people who buy that expect to sell it to the next person who expects to sell it to the next person and so on. So while 180 years, I think is, is, is an appropriate, maybe a bit longer than, than really necessary and certainly beyond our vision, I do think we have to take cognizance of the fact that we expect this community and these properties to be here, what we would prefer forever. So that leads me to the question, I, I think I've picked up, and I'm not 100% certain, that we're planning on building roads and services outside or the wrong side of the seismic limit. Is that correct or have I misheard?
I know you haven't misspoken on that. The services and some of the, some of the parkland improvements that have been tabled, for example, that viewing platform that Nile might have, might have showed in his presentation or an amphitheater that was similar to Sydney would be located down close to the shoreline and maybe subject to the erosional influences over the course of time. You can fully expect that within that course of time, it's going to be picked up and relocated or shifted in part. It may be such that we can put things like the amphitheater back a little bit. You can see that setback line in speci, in specificity on this diagram in front of you, right at the bottom of that waterway. It's actually not shifting inward as much as the effects on the southern portion of the land or even the natural boundaries on that northern portion of lands. I completely agree with your comment. Timeline can only be taken lightly, except for inland. And some of the municipal improvements have been suggested in the geotechnical study to be locatable on the other side of those lines. The only point for me to reflect into that 180-year timeline is, is that the situating, the situation of the road versus the building, in most instances, the building will sit waterfront side. However, we tried, we'll try through the planning process to maintain as many view quarters as possible. So I'd like to flip those around and oftentimes, and in which case the public amenity or the public asset of being the road may be that waterfront side. The only reference that I make to the 180 years in that is, is that there could be potential to do some high bluff, geotechnical retain, retaining that goes along there that improves the life cycle of those, of those infrastructure assets while still allowing some of the erosional processes of the bluffs to occur in and around. I feel that this, that this specific about the land is frankly more, is a little bit more critical than the municipality being able to shift or shore up a road or even some of the services. Because you're right, there is an expectation that land lasts for forever. The consideration of time is, is part of my consideration when considering that land area. But quite frankly, I haven't considered the individual parcels yet, nor have I worked with a geotechnical engineer to specifically identify the sort of improvements that be required at that point in time before letting a, a property be built on as part of the conditions to subdivide. So thank you for your comments, but I don't have all the answers yet.
Yeah, I, I fully understand that all of our conversations right now are somewhat theoretical. But it would seem to me that in order for the house to, or the, the lot to exist and continue to be valuable, it needs the road and the services in front of it. We don't need the, the, whatever's in the park, if you like, could be regarded as sacrificial if we have to. And I'm not, I'm not, you know, worrying too much about this because I agree with you. We can always build something to stabilize it before, you know, in the, if you like, the wrong side of that seismic line. But I think we should give the same consideration to the road and the services that are needed to service the property as we do to the property. I don't, I don't see that they can be separated.
If I could add something? That's a great question. So just to clarify, so the, the sort of approach we've taken is we're going to allow 180 years of erosion to take place. Land will move in and then the day after, we're going to have an earthquake that has a return period of like 1,000, 1 in 2,500 years. So it's a, the, it's a, you're assuming all that land's going to be gone and then you're hit with the, you know, a very large earthquake. So that doesn't mean the land that's impacted by the earthquake is gone, it's just been damaged. And we're setting the structures back enough so that the damage is, is under what's been established as a tolerable amount for a structure. But the road's still there, it's just going to be cracked up. And I think it's important to understand that all the roads are going to be damaged, you know, after that sort of earthquake. So the land, the road's still there, it's just, it's just damaged.
Okay, I was, I was really looking at that seismic line as kind of the slip.
It's not going to be like the slip plane, no.
No, the slip plane will be quite a bit seaward from that.
It's just a incremental increase in, in deformation and cracks and subsidence as you get close to the rest of the slope.
Totally get that. Thank you. You set my mind at ease on that one. And the other point I wanted to address is again, your role as approving officer in protecting us here. At some point in this process, I, as I understand it, we will identify whether any of the settling ponds need to be protected because they are too close to the, the water to guarantee their, that they'll be stable in, in the sort of events we're talking about. So at what point in the process, given that this is a 20-year build-out, do you think we will identify that?
I anticipate firstly, the application to subdivide into block parcels of land to coincide with some of the residential developments on the north and south piece and to identify some key areas in the core. I kind of envision working with the development team about five preliminary subdivisions at first off and then a built form after that. A condition of those preliminary subdivisions, because I have to prepare for those land areas to be sold. And another party to come in would be a preliminary geotechnical investigation of the site to start to bring forward recommendations. Again, there'd be several steps thereafter to realize the full built form on those lands, in which case I would see each successive layer building on top of each other to start talking about those retention properties. My visualization of how that's going to play out is going to be completely formed by the geotechnical recommendations of the site. But in play right now is, is that relationship of that land and shoring up that berm. As Stuart spoke about the differential settlement, that has the potential to happen across a property line in mid-span of the house. The foundations have to be considered in regards to that entirely with, with that consideration. So I see multiple steps coming forward, each one, you know, building on the previous step. Hope that answers your question.
So speaking theoretically, what's possible? Because protecting those sediment ponds is probably going to be fairly expensive compared to the development costs of any other lot. So a developer could, for instance, put off doing that and just not apply for subdivision of those lands. And then eventually decide that it's, it's not worth the cost for the little, the few extra lots I'm going to get and then it would never happen. But I presume as long as the approving officer of the day is, is making sure we don't approve that land without that cost being expended, then the city is protected.
That's exactly right. Those costs are expected to play out over that course of development, over the course of time. That consideration of eventual not being able to build because of the cost to build on those land areas is real and present. And the approving officer can do little actually about that, but inform the purchaser and landowner that these are the costs to develop the land and this is the method of which the approved consideration has been brought forward. And that's it. If the land, and this is waterfront lands, over the course of time, land is considered, especially waterfront land, and they're not making much, much more of it, to appreciate. Eventually, those cost recoveries will be in play and I agree with you, they may not be overly apparent right at the start. That's one of the important factors that I do reflect on over the course of time, not the 180 years, but the 20-year built form of it. It's something that I've spoken about with the developer about it, quite frankly as well. How do we, and you heard it today, Mr. Hartshorn spoke about stepping in concert together. That's exactly it. If you go and create all the homes here, what happens to create those more expensive ones there because the land is more expensive? That's, regrettably, the approving officer has very little to do with the cost of real estate.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor, can we ask?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank Kerry for, Kerry Clark, for an excellent report. I, I, I found this so easy to understand and I, I just want to thank you very much for it. And on that note, I'd like to move receipt of the report.
All right, do I have a? Thank you. Do I have a second or?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on then, thank you. Moving on to seven, 7.1, which is by law number 1777, Land Use Amendment, CD 15, Zone Third and Final Reading. Move third. Thank you, moved by Counselor Logan, second by Counselor Parkinson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Want to move final? Sorry, are we just doing third or are we doing final as well? We're doing final as well. Do you have a mover? Thank you, moved by Counselor Kobayashi. Second by Counselor Parkinson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Gordy?
Good afternoon.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried?